Now called the City Council Special Meeting to Order at City Hall, Council Chambers 389 Spruce Street, Morgantown, West Virginia, 265-05 on Tuesday, July 30th, 2024, 7:00 PM. If the Clerk would please take roll.
Bill Kueckie.
Here.
Wheeze Michael.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Celine.
Here.
Danielle Trumbull.
Here.
Dave Harshbarger.
Here.
Brian Butcher.
Here.
And Mayor Joe Buganam.
Present. The first thing we have today for our new business is a consideration of approval of a resolution of Morgantown City Council authorizing a demolition bid award. For this presentation, I look to City Planner Ricky Jaeger. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. I'm the Council City Manager, Hoss. So the city received five qualified bids.
It's to demolish fifty-eight structures in the community along Richwood Avenue. And after review, staff recommends that the bid be awarded to the reclaimed company, who was the lowest bidder. I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank council for holding this special meeting to consider the staff's request and for everyone who contributed their time and energy into pulling this bid together. I would especially like to thank our CBO Drew Cantus and Barb Morgan, Executive Assistant in the Engineering and Public Works Department, for all their efforts with whom we could not have put this together and brought this before you for consideration this evening. And with that, I thank you.
Thank you. Ricky, if you would just hang back two seconds.
Move to award bid to reclaim property for $548,500.
That's it. Second. Any questions?
I have questions. Several questions.
Yes.
What is the timeline for this now? When would it begin and how long would we expect it to take?
So our kickoff meeting will be mid-August and they will have, the contract will have one hundred and eighty days to complete the demolition project.
Okay. What, this amount looks like it came in at a very good rate. Is it my understanding that there's enough money in the TIP fund to cover this entire amount? We don't have to find monies from other sources?
That is correct in my understanding. So there were four zones, three as the base bid and one alternate zone, four, and there were sufficient funds to do all four zones at this time.
Very exciting.
And that's why we had to have a special meeting because of the plan for mid-August?
Yes, we want to keep, we want to keep on that timeline if we can, and we appreciate the accommodation.
Just full support.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much, and the staff and everybody else who's worked on this.
Tear 'em down.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk?
Bill Kueckie.
Yes.
Wheeze Michael.
Here. Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Deputy Mayor Celine.
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull.
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger.
Yes.
Brian Butcher.
Yes.
And Mayor Buganam.
Yes. That's a seven-zero.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, and that adjourns our special meeting.
Thank you, Ricky.
Thank you. All right, we're going to swap seats, play musical chairs as we move into our Committee of the Whole.
We'll call this meeting to order. This is the agenda for the Committee of the Whole. We're in City Hall, Council Chambers, 389 Spruce Street. It's Tuesday, July 30th of 2024. Because we just had a special meeting, it's a little bit after 7:00 PM. And this is a Committee of the Whole meeting of the Morgantown City Council. It's intended to provide the opportunity for council to receive information, ask questions, and identify policy options in an informal setting. No official action is taken at these meetings. This Committee of the Whole meeting. The following matters are scheduled, and we are going to get right started with presentations. And... What is this? Okay. Pardon me. All right. I was wondering if it was a name or a descriptor. Non-congregate overnight shelters. It's the Morgantown Church, and we have Brandon Brammer here to kick it off. And then you can identify whoever else is with you.
Okay. Good evening, thanks for having us. I'm Brandon Brammer, and this is Matt Devak. He is, I suppose if he were to have a title, he'd be the project manager for this proposal this evening. And so, as she already stated, we are proposing non-congregate shelters. I've come to this proposal and I've gotten to this point because I grew up in southeastern Ohio, very similar to the situation in which we see in Morgantown. My mother, for most of my life, was an addict. She was in and out of homelessness. And upon moving to Morgantown and getting married, I offered her the opportunity to do something new, to try something new. My mother was living in a drug den where she would receive her monthly benefits, pay them directly to her dealer, and then he would provide her with up to $1,000 worth of fentanyl every single month. My mother was enslaved to her dealer, enslaved to the situation that she found herself in. But my mother was lucky, unlike some people, and she had people that still cared about her. My mother robbed my family multiple times when I was a child. She made a lot of mistakes. But I gave her an opportunity to do something new, and I'm proud to say that my mother is now full-time employed. She has a salary job. She's been clean for over two years. And that was thanks to help that she did receive from the programs established in Morgantown. And so I think that's a real win for the things that we are doing. But unfortunately, her long-term boyfriend, he didn't get the same opportunities. And a few months ago, he showed up here and he asked me for help. And I told him no. And whether that was the right or wrong option, that's what I did. Because I thought I was protecting my mother, and I still believe I was. And then he returned to Ohio where he would have been some other town's homeless person, some other town's crackhead, some other town's problem. And three days later, he overdosed and died. And that Sunday night, that was on, I believe, a Saturday. That Sunday night, I was at my church and I was feeding the kids and we were having Bible class as usual. And as we had leftover food, one of my kids, being a kid, said sort of mouthly, "Well, what are you going to do with the extra food?" And I said, "Well, I'm not sure." And they said, "Well, you can go give it to the crackheads downtown." And at that time, I thought, "You know what? You're absolutely right. I think I will go and provide them some food." And what I found were people who could have been my mother, people who could have been Kevin. They were people who had families that were struggling. They were struggling with addiction. Some of them are struggling with addiction, not all of them. I don't want to place that blanket over them. But they were people who had lost their identity. Every person that I meet downtown, I spend, me and my wife and some others from my church who are here, we spend almost two hours every Sunday night in our community, in the camps, in our downtown area, meeting these people and getting to know their names because they've lost everything down to their identity. We know them in the public forum as the homeless, as the addicts, as the crackheads. They do not have a name, they do not have a family, and they certainly do not have a home. And my goal is to advocate for something different. And that's where we come to non-congregate overnight shelters. These are not houses. They are shelters. They are a place that will be insulated, that will be warm, that will have a bed, somewhere for people to sleep. That's not my presentation, that's a guy's. And so I don't think that we need all of the statistics to prove that we have a problem with people who are un-sheltered and people who are addicted. This is something that needs to be addressed. I've seen it live and in person. There are people in this room who I know that I've met out there, and I've given them a meal, and I've seen them at their lowest. And so this is obviously something that we want to address, I would hope that we want to address. And the compassion and the hope that they can rise to something else is the driving force here. It is my driving desire for why I want to do this. We need to have an option. Things are changing. We're at a peak now where, we're at this time where I don't know what your regular crowd looks like, but it seems there's a lot of people here tonight who are concerned about this issue. And so we want to provide a solution. We have organizations, like I said earlier, that can come in when people need that help, when people are looking for an answer, they have a long-term solution. It worked for my mother, it can work for other people. It's working for other people. But we have to have an immediate solution. And so my goal is that we're not building houses, we're building a place to be warm. I cannot go another winter in this city knowing that there are people who will freeze to death inside our city because there is not a place for them to be warm. I know that they've committed crimes. I know that they are addicted. I know that they might lie, and they might cheat, and they might steal. But I do not believe that any of those things, that the due punishment for that is to freeze to death. Because no one wants them in their area to stay warm. And so I'm going to turn it over to Matt for a moment. He is the project manager. He's gone on these trips, and he'll kind of explain where some of this idea was birthed from.
Thanks, Brandon. So all of this kind of came out of our trips, trips that our church takes to Honduras. I got involved with that a couple of years ago, but our church has been going there for over fifteen years. And it seems, it seems different to go over to a third world country and do a mission work. But, I mean, over there, we work with a couple of different organizations that do just like, just what we're talking about here, building shelters for families. Now, what we've done is kind of scaled them down a little bit to meet kind of the needs that we think there are in Morgantown here. But everybody asks, like, it seems so strange, and I think that was one of Brandon's things is, when we go into Honduras, we go to help feed the homeless. We go there specifically to find them, to build them shelters. And if we can't do that in our own community, what's the point of going, you know, overseas to do it? So that's kind of where this has come from. We wanted to start out with, try and work with an opportunity, and like you said, the timeframe that we're working with here, to create these shelters and do what we've been doing, you know, overseas, and bring that to our own community here. So the actual plan itself, the picture in the front end there was the structures that we build over in Honduras. Like I said, this is a little bit scaled-down version, and I had to tweak it a little bit to be able to insulate it and handle the needs that we have here. But the structure itself is a ten-by-twelve structure. It's going to be all pressure-treated framing, have a floor built, an OSB, studded walls with a T-111 siding that will go on the outsides, tin metal roof, obviously insulating the floor walls and ceiling, and then also putting an OSB material along the inside as a finish material. That way, it's durable, it's going to hold up to, it's not going to be able to be damaged and things like that. And then obviously, the biggest situation, biggest concern with any kind of opportunity like this is the cost. Over in Honduras, we build a sixteen-by-sixteen structure for about $2,500. Obviously, we had to rearrange some of that for the different material costs here, but you can see there the quick breakdown. Ultimately, it doesn't really matter what goes into it, but you can see there the framing material, the sheathing, the insulation roofing, miscellaneous hardware. We looked at it, and we are confident that we can get these structures built for $3,000 per unit, and that is at a retail cost. Obviously, with volume, we'd be able to, you know, reduce that a bit. But the other thing is, we, when we're in Honduras, we're building a sixteen-by-sixteen structure. And I think the last one we did, this past year we were there, it was three and a half hours, about eight of us, from start to finish. So we could probably put, as a church, we've been talking to the community and outreach to other churches, to be able to get the labor together to be able to put these together.
And so, one, this is, this is the plan, and this is something that I've gone around over the last couple of weeks, and I've spoken to business owners here in town, I've spoken to community members. Right now, I have a little over $10,000 in pledges from local businesses, both downtown and throughout our community, that are willing to step up and say, "If this is a project that our city believes in, if we can get the support of our council, this, I would be willing to give you X amount of dollars." And through those donations, I currently have over $10,000 in pledges, or the equivalent of approximately three of these structures. I think that what really drives me here is I'm not a business owner. I'm not a politician. If you check the records, I haven't voted in a long time. I'm not here for some kind of political gain. But what I am is a man who feels incredibly compelled by the truth of what God's Word says. And I feel that I'm compelled to be the hands and feet of Christ to people that are downtrodden and to people who are going through struggle, and give them relief to those who are weary. And it's the same truth that tells us that as long as we have opportunity, we should not grow weary of doing good. We have an opportunity, I've gathered the laborers, I need the support to say, "Here's a piece of property. Here's a place they can go. Here's a place where they can have safety, where they can have warmth, where they can have the ability to come in at the end of the night and check in and say, 'I just need somewhere warm to sleep. I need somewhere warm to go.'" Guys, Maslow's hierarchy of needs tells us that until someone has the ability to sit down and clear their head and look at their situation and say, "I need something else. I need something different in my life," they're going to be trapped in this cycle. That's what happened with my mother. She was given an opportunity to say, "There's a better life out there." And she grabbed it and she took it. And I'm not going to be able to convince you, and I'm not going to be able to convince myself, that building these structures is going to save everyone who's on the street. That's not going to happen. I do not believe that to be true. But I do know that it can make the difference in someone's life, and so I'm willing to try. I hope, and I pray that if today the decision is made, whether it's right or wrong in somebody's eyes is not for me to say. But if the choice is made to say that people can no longer camp in our downtown area, if they can no longer camp in our parks, if they can no longer camp in recreation spaces, if that's the choice that's made, please consider this idea. If we're going to say, "You can't be here, and you can't be here, and you can't be here," where can they be? Because outlawing camping does not suddenly grant them the ability to be somewhere else. It does not grant them the ability to be somewhere else. And so please, if that's the choice that's made, please consider this. I have community support. I have laborers from all over our country. I have churches as far away as Texas who are considering this proposal and considering supporting this. I have churches from as far away as Parkersburg that want to come here, churches from Johnstown, Pennsylvania that want to come here to work on this project if we can find a place that is suitable to build these structures. And so we have the laborers, and we're preparing the funding, and I hope that, I hope that you will see the necessity, and you'll see the good that it can be. Thank you. If anybody has questions, I'd love to hear some of them.
We will have some questions.
Yeah.
Okay. So I wish you didn't skip over it. I like the idea of these benefits in terms of increased safety and health benefits.
I didn't know what my time limit was, and so I didn't want to go over my time limit.
You're perfect. So you said that when you're looking at the pricing with the money you're raising, this is at retail cost, so theoretically it should be less.
It should be less, yes. A bulk supply, and of course, Matt works for a large home company here, and so he's more familiar with a lot of the pricing. But yes, if we buy in bulk, those prices will go down. That is, the price if we went to a big box store here in our town right now and purchased those at retail price off the shelves.
And that's also including tax, you know? I'm sure we can do some kind of taxing there.
Yeah. So we went in and said, "This is the supplies we need, can you give us a receipt for that?" And that's the numbers that we got.
Deputy Mayor, yeah. A couple of questions, actually. Is this done anywhere else in the United States?
There's currently, I was speaking with a church out of Santa Fe, and they have something, they called them pallet structures, and they were of a similar nature where they were able to be moved with a forklift or something so that they can be placed in different places. And they were, they were run by generators. And so, yeah, it's been done other places, but we would be, and I think that is something that, for me, is something that I feel is important, is that we have an opportunity to be totally unique and bring some real change to how people, especially in our region where it's needed, to address this issue. It would be, it would be relatively new, especially in our, our area.
And you say this is modeled off structures built in Honduras?
Yes, sir.
What are the purposes of these structures in Honduras? Who do they serve?
Okay, so in Honduras, we lead with two different mission organizations. I believe they're listed there in that, in the concept section. Torch Missions and Mount Top Ministries, and they do something similar to what I'm doing here. They approach the mayor of a village, of a community, and they say, you know, "Mayor, who in this community needs a home?" The mayor, knowing the community, addresses and says, "I think that this person, this family, is in the most need." It could be old people, it could be young people, it could be single mothers. We really don't put a, I don't know the right word. There's, yeah, we don't put a label on, on who needs a house, right? We don't say, "Well, you have to be, you know, you can't, you have to be involved in the church, or you have to, you know, have three kids," or whatever it is. We don't really put a qualifier on who needs housing. And so the mayor will say, "This person needs a house." Then they'll say, you know, "Where can we put them?" And the mayor will say, "Well, we have this piece of property where we think you could put this house." And the city donates that property to the family. And then we say, "Well, who can build it?" And then they call a church like us, or churches from all over the country, to go and build those homes. And so the concept and the way that we're doing it is exactly as we've seen it modeled there. Go to the, go to the mayor or the people who run the town and say, "Hey, we see people who need a house. Where can we put these houses?" The mayor says, "These people need a house, you can put the house here," and then we construct that house.
It's a ten-by-twelve structure?
It will be, yes.
What do you think the occupancy would be?
We're hoping to. In my, in our vision, talking to Matt and some other folks, the goal would be that there, we've had people express interest in providing the electrical boxes, to provide one electrical outlet in each house, if that would be, if that would be something we'd be interested in. And then we would have two twin beds inside the building. It would be run, of course, it says at the end of the presentation that it's up to you to say how it's run, or up to whatever governing body we could assign to, to run and manage the property. But someone would check in at the end of the night, they would stow their belongings, they would enter the building with just themselves, and then they would sleep there for the evening, and then in the morning, they would check out similarly as you do, say, a hotel or a motel. That's why it's non-congregate. It is not meant to be a permanent shelter. So let's say you're in the thirteenth building this evening, tomorrow when you come back, perhaps you'll be in the fifteenth building, or something of that nature. They're not meant to be a home. They're not meant to be a home. It's meant to be somewhere to be warm and to be out of the weather. That is not an unsightly camp, that's uncapped.
Okay. You've anticipated my, I guess, my last question. Plans are in development for an organization to manage clientele as well as upkeep maintenance of the shelters?
Yes. Well, I don't know that I'm at mercy to say at the moment. Am I at mercy to say that at the moment?
You have someone, though, who would be responsible?
Yes, we have an organization that's interested in managing this if it were to, if it were to happen, yes. Someone with experience in managing other camps. Tent cities or tent camps in other places, but of a similar nature, yes.
I guess I'll speak to this. I've spoken and brought this idea to Mark of Catholic Charities alongside me. I told Mark about what they had presented to me. He said that it would be an ideal situation in terms of, so...
Joe, actually, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. I spoke to Mark of Catholic Charities a few weeks ago and told him about the idea that was presented here. Mark had expressed that it'd be more of an ideal situation. Actually, I'm going to forward it all to you. He had written a letter of support on behalf of Catholic Charities for the idea that's being proposed here, in terms of something that they would be willing to help facilitate funding for.
Good. Thank you.
So, in terms of location, thoughts on where that might be? And what would be the infrastructure needed in the way of bathroom facilities, water facility?
Yeah, so our hope would be that those things would have to be established. Of course, there are facilities in the city where it might be more advantageous where there are public restrooms already established. And so, we're not sure where it could go, right? Like, I don't have, I can't say. Now, if it were me, we already have places for people who are in need, such as the facilities on Scott Avenue. And so, if we place them in that vicinity, they would have access to things such as the Salvation Army, which would provide them meals, things such as, you know, open times to do laundry and take showers. And so, even if these people do make their way from wherever this community would be for them into our downtown sector, if they're able to be clean, if they're able to have on clean clothes, they do not become the outcast. They can be, they can be clean, they can, you know, be presentable. And I hate to speak of them like that, but when it comes right down to it, I think that's what a lot of people see, is they see, you know, something that is unsightly. And this is an opportunity. I don't think anybody here ever went like a couple of weeks without a shower. I think that that's a basic human need that we could provide to people. And so, I don't think it's wrong to say, if they do make it back into the downtown area, at least they'll have a bath. It's hot outside. It's been a really hot summer. I can't imagine that hygiene is not, it's listed under our benefits, you know, available places to access hygiene is important. It's incredibly important, especially when you're someone who's trying to reintegrate back into a functioning society.
So I had four questions written down, and Bill asked every single one of them. But if we're discussing...
Great job, Bill.
Way to go, Bill. If we're discussing the possibility of Catholic charities running this and needing the other services at Hazel's House of Hope, such as the laundry facilities, the shower facilities, public restroom facilities, I am the city's representative on the Board of Morgantown Community Resources that oversees Hazel's House of Hope. We have a board meeting tomorrow. It was rescheduled, but we will have another one in a few weeks. I would love to invite you all to come and speak to the entirety of our board.
That would be great.
I looked through your presentation. I don't see contact information, but I assume, Joe, you can give that to me, you can forward that along so that I can, I can get you on an agenda for the board meeting?
Yes, that'd be great. As this is kind of a hot issue in town, I didn't necessarily want my personal contact information to be in the public forum.
Understood.
So I'm sure you all know what that's like. But yes, I would love to. Actually, my wife and I are leaving Wednesday evening to return to Honduras to build some more houses and work with the people there. We will be back on the 13th, and so, she's shaking her head, yes. We'll be back on the 13th, and so, if that would be available, I'm sure we would love to make the time to be there.
Tentatively, I believe our next meeting would maybe be August 19th, or, no, that's a Monday, August 20th or 27th.
Okay.
After tomorrow.
Yeah, that would be, that would be...
We could always also set up a Zoom meeting or something if we needed to.
All right. Yeah, I'm sure that would be ideal.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else? Yes?
I just wanted to say how much we appreciate you literally sticking your neck out in front of everybody with your proposal and whatever we all can do to help support.
Yeah.
We'll have to all keep in touch through our mayor and...
Yeah, I hope that this is not the last line of contact that we have. I hope that this opens a conversation.
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Oh, pardon, Brian.
Hey.
Hi.
Sorry.
Just hit me over the head with it.
The floating head, he's here.
I need to look up for the...
The only thing I guess I would appreciate is the unsheltered shelters. I would, if we were going to have this, I would be very much interested and think that like a critical component of this would be some very intentional and broad-based sort of case worker touchpoints with all the people that are there. I would want this to make, to make sure that this is closely managed. Like you said, you touched on it there, but I do think that that's, wow, this is excellent. And I think that like, we could get a lot of people into shelter really quickly with this, which is one of the issues, big issues that we've had that you've identified, I think, probably the biggest component as to whether or not this is successful, would be how we do case management in this case. So, yeah, I look forward to hearing what those plans are and making sure that we're very careful about that.
Yeah, I would totally agree with you that it definitely does need structure. It cannot turn into sort of a place to, as they call it on the, on the street, it would be, you know, a shooting gallery, somewhere to go and use drugs and those sorts of things. It can't, it can't turn into that, or else it won't succeed. I do know that my friend Amber Foster, who lives in Tugusigapa, Honduras, she established, she bought a large building and did the same thing that we're doing, offering people a place to come and be warm and safe and offer them a place of stability. And she's been extremely successful, and she is willing to open up a line of conversation to show sort of the steps that she took to establish a program where, you know, I don't want to say behavior, but where there was behavior expectations, when there was an expectation that we're not, you know, rampantly using drugs and those sorts of things, and we're attempting to progress and climb that hierarchy of needs. And so, she's willing to open up those lines of conversation to discuss how she manages her program as well.
Anything else, Brian?
Deputy Mayor, Matt, again?
Yes.
Just one thing. Your estimation of $3,000 per structure, we've seen this in the past, it would be good as we progress. And I realize this is just a broad-based concept, that we were a little more specific as what the cost might be in terms of whatever utilities you need to bring into it, whatever furniture you need to bring into it, whatever articles that you plan to include there.
Yes, sir.
Would be...
Yeah. There's more of an itemized list that we do have as far as the base materials to construct the building. We just kind of put them into, into sections, you know, such as lumber or whatever it is, so that it was a little easier to present. But if you are interested, we do have a more thorough breakdown of all of the prices on a receipt form.
I would be more interested.
Okay.
Thank you.
When you're doing this in Honduras, are there bathrooms associated, or how do you...
So, it's a little different there because their expectations for what is, you know, typical home is very different.
Sanitation, huh?
Yeah, so it's interesting. The first time I built them, I felt like I was creating the least common denominator on housing, right? It was just four walls and a bed. But I returned this year to a village in which we had worked previously, and I saw birthday parties going on inside these houses and people from the community being there. And I went into one house where they had, they had added an extra wall and they had installed their own electricity and had a refrigerator and a stove top and those sorts of things that they had, that they had built onto. Of course, that won't be necessary for what we're trying to accomplish. But typically, what they do is their community, let's say we built six houses in the same area, everybody recognizes they need a bathroom. And so, those people would get together, they would pool their funds, and then they build, sometimes it's a true toilet, and sometimes it's more of what we would think of as an outhouse. And so, they, their, their community comes together and says, you know, we've been given this house, and it's not without some sweat and equity. I've met with people on the street, I've talked to them about this. These are houses that we can build without the necessity for power tools, without the necessity for massive amounts of skill. And we do have people who are members of the unsheltered community that are willing to partner with us and join in this project. It won't be just us giving them something. There will be sweat equity and there will be expectations, and it's the same when we're there. The homeowner almost always provides us a meal while we work and then also helps to build the house while we're there.
Nice. I don't know if you have anything else? Do you have another, Bill?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for giving me the time.
Thank you.
No, 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 I meant the red, yeah. Just wanted to make sure we... All right, so we're about to have a public portion. Please be respectful of each other. People have differing points of view. We need to hear from everyone. I do not want to hear disrespectful comments if you don't happen to agree with someone. That is, they're prerogative to come and speak, and we want to hear from everyone. So we're going to start this public portion. And I'll start with Annie York.
We can't hear you back here at all, so you know...
Oh, sorry. Annie's going to speak first.
Thank you.
Chair of the Human Rights Commission.
Could you all please just mention to the people on the level down below you to be quiet?
Are the microphones on, but you can hear?
That's no problem, you can hear.
Yeah, there's no sound amplification in here because it messes with the recording, so...
So we'll all need to speak up.
I was quite surprised to see that there is a ordinance on the agenda for tonight from the Human Rights Commission. I don't know, we didn't ask for anything. Our last meeting, we're now free. Who goes over here when they go? A member of the public had brought in at the end of the meeting, had a talk about opening up membership to workers in the city. It looked like a curious idea had bounced around. It's not part of a formal discussion, it's not on our agenda, no votes taken. And our third commissioner didn't even know about it. And then there's this ordinance popping up saying people who work in the city should also be on commission. It is the arm of the city council, or a local council or something. We don't make the rules, but we'd like to consult with them, with the patient. I believe Mr. Butcher's willing to move this forward, and that we're acting with faith. But this isn't something that we're asking for from the commission, from the council, sorry. We would like to discuss it more at a meeting and come to a conclusion. But I'm concerned, Kayla Carlson, former mayor secretary, wrote today, or recently, about concerns for the, wrong email, concerns he had about this plan to open it up for people who work in the city. And I've had those thoughts myself. If somebody comes into town once a week and sells a piece of paper to somebody and puts in a 1099 and declares it on the taxes, that means they work in the city. I lived in Brookhaven for 30 years and came into town all the time for law school and hospital and more hospital. And I did not have anything to do with city council. I didn't have anything to do with permissions. And I don't believe I should have done it. I believe people who are paying taxes here should be having a voice here. And yes, we need more commissioners. And yes, I'm up here every two weeks saying, anybody, anybody, please apply. And we are not getting great quality candidates. And so, we need more character. And the Human Rights Commission's bylaws, I believe they are, and I cannot verify that they were ever ratified by anybody, just, that's what I have. It says that when openings come up, and when each vacancy occurs, the commission shall provide to the city clerk for the city council a list of recommended replacements of not more than three citizens who believes can best support the work of the commission at the time. I'm not sure how that's supposed to work either. In fact, I would guess it doesn't because I've been working hard to find people and not doing super well. But the three people who you have on this commission right now are very dedicated and energetic and doing what needs to be done. And I don't want to toss anybody under the bus, but we didn't ask to have this opened up, and we'd really prefer that you don't. So, any questions? It's up to you, you're the council. But those are our thoughts. And the other commissioner who's in town right now is coming to speak next. I have 33 seconds.
Thank you. Ashley Swanson?
Hi, I'm Ashley Swanson. I'm also on the Human Rights Commission. Again, just here reiterating that this is not something we voted on, not something that was discussed. I was actually out of town and zoomed into our meeting just to do the elections for the upcoming year, was not even there for the discussions. Although we do only have three people on the commission as of right now, there were someone that had recently resigned. So we could have potentially only had exactly 50% of attendance there. So we were really concerned that this was something that was brought up without our knowledge, without our consent. As an arm of the city council, we would really appreciate the communication to us before this happens. It would be really great if we were involved in the conversation, if that is something that council would like to change. But as it stands right now, we weren't asked about this, so that would be great. Communication is definitely a big thing that we should take advantage of across the city as well as the city council and the community members. Again, we do have four open positions on our council. So we are on Facebook. You can get ahold of us on there, as well as look for our page on the city website. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Marlene Iglesias knew where she was in line.
Thanks. 1093 Saberton Avenue. I'm here to speak about the camping ban today. When Morgantown talks about itself, the one thing I always hear is what a welcoming community Morgantown is. This bill is a sea change, and bringing it forward with no prior discussion from the community, that is unthinkable to me. I have been working with, I have met with six out of seven members of city council, and I'm happy to meet with anyone who would like to meet. I have met with housing advocates and professionals in the community. And I have advocated for an affordable housing manager, an unsheltered resources strategy person, a housing manager for the city as an official position, as somebody who can direct the resources of the city to one of its greatest needs, affordable housing and the needs of the unsheltered. These are two populations who, you know, this affects everyone. I will also note, Councilor Butcher brought this bill, is my understanding, to the city administration this past week. I assume it will be on the agenda for next month. I don't see the need for such a sea change bill right now when we don't even have staff who is our liaison, our expert in housing resources and shelter planning. Thank you. Thank you.
Presser?
Yeah, I was gonna ask something about Bluegrass Village. The new owners of Bluegrass Village gave an eviction notice to my woman and our four kids that owns their own home, one of which is a five-week-old newborn baby girl. Have you, I have, they did this three weeks ago and still not given us a reason to walk. If you didn't listen to our citizens' laws being threatened in a multitude of ways, with the exception of Brian Butcher, is when you all messed up big time. We all know how easily you can make changes to the city and allocate money when you find something shiny that you all want to get. You always in turn, you always in turn make us all pay for it. Morgantown City Council approved pay raises for future mayors and council members. The second reading of an ordinance that will, that would increase per meeting pay from $250 to $350 for council members, and from $350 to $450 for the mayor, was passed in a six-to-one vote during the council's meeting. Highest city of Morgantown employee salary in year 2023 was $162,129. City of Morgantown employees' number in the year 2023 was 350. City of Morgantown average salary was $46,761, and the median salary was $48,345. According to the last payroll, city of Morgantown average salary is 37% lower than the USA average, but 19% higher than West Virginia state average. City of Morgantown employee salaries are usually between $24,582 and $68,391. Top 10% of highest-earning employees have salaries ranging from $80,441 to $162,129. Higher salary in Mollengale County Schools in the year 2020 was $150,000. Number of employees at Mollengale County Schools in the year 2020 was 4,413. Average annual salary was $18,629, and the median salary was $3,309. Mollengale County Schools' average salary is 60% lower than the USA average, and the median salary is 92% lower than the USA median salary. This was one, this was one citizen's reaction and proposal. Here's an idea: How about city council form a committee made up of representatives from their workers, WVU, the business community, and random community residents, or formulate, to formulate reasonable objectives for improvements to be made in the city over a specific time period, say eighteen months? If those objectives are not met, they get a pay raise, or if they are met, they get a pay raise. If they are not, council voluntarily resigns, and new elections are scheduled to give others a chance to lead and accomplish these goals. X number of new sidewalks, X number of new businesses located within the city, X number of reductions in crime statistics, X examples of improvements in the vacancy, homeless slash addiction situation, X accomplishments in the area of improving quality of life for the majority of the city's residents. How about they hold themselves accountable for actually doing some things to make life better for the 32,000 residents of the city? If they are successful, they get pay raises, a blue ribbon, in blue ribbons. If they fail, they step aside and get out of the way. In a split decision, Morgantown City Council voted Tuesday evening to buy the former defense-in-depth facility and turn it into a training center for the Morgantown Police Department. Those council members who voted favor of the purchases, which passed four to three. The city will pay $500,000 upfront using American Rescue Act plan funds, and will leave, and will lease the facility for ten years at a $240,000 annual. A $1.5 million promissory, can't read that name, note will be signed by the city, which must make its best efforts to seek another $500,000 in grant funding at the end of the lease. The promissory note will be written off. Councilman Joe Abou Gahdan said he would trust Chief Eric Powell, if Powell said the facility would help the department. That's all I got. That's all.
Thank you. Susan Eason?
Hi, I'm Susan Eason, and I'm here tonight regarding the proposal for a ban on camping in downtown Morgantown. First of all, I want to say I'm very frustrated with how many people are on our downtown streets. I come to downtown frequently, I've been harassed and asked for money many times by folks. Most of them are kind when I say no, but I have been approached aggressively in a point where I've been afraid. Additionally, I work, I'm a member of the Presbyterian Church, which is downtown Morgantown as well, and I've worked with their Sunday morning pancake breakfast every Sunday morning for 24 years. I don't go every week, but we have a team that rotates through every eight weeks. But I've watched the progression and change in the folks who are coming into that breakfast. At times, served up to 100 people, right now, we serve about 50 people. What I see is folks coming in for breakfast who need a warm meal, a good meal, and they're getting it. They need a place, they need a place to sleep, they're sleeping in our hallways in our church. We've asked them not to sleep on the steps where people walk in, but they can go down the hallway and take a place in a room down there. But what bothers me is not only the homeless issue, but the drug issue we have in this town. So I think there's a serious drug issue, I, they go out, they have breakfast, and they go out in the parking lot and shoot up. So we have a wicked problem here. If you know anything about what's going on across the country, this is, of course, a wicked problem for many communities. And I want to say that as a member of the Presbyterian Church, we are exposed to people who are needing housing, and we care about this. But I think it's a complex problem, and I know people are working on it, that have been working on it and trying to bring people together, but I want to continue to be a part of that, that solution. I don't think banning people by law is the way to go, because we are going to be using our resources to just put them in jail where they can't pay to get out. They'll be there, they'll be back on the street without any resources. So there are many resources in this community, like the man who spoke earlier, that helped his mother get off drugs, and I just want to say that the Presbyterian Church will continue to work to try to address the drug issue. These folks are here with us every morning for about an hour on Sundays. I want to work to bring in WVU Medicine, the Monkeny Health Department, Mylan Push Park Health, right? I have talked with Laura about possibly coming in and doing a wound clinic with folks, but then also bringing in additional folks to do some assessment on readiness to go into recovery. So, but again, we are volunteers at our church, we need folks who will step up to do the work as well, and will partner with them. The other thing, I'm pleased to see that it's on your agenda to discuss tonight as a resolution to do some evaluation of affordable housing in Morgantown. That's another thing we need. I appreciate what was said about having someone focused on staff to do housing affordability and addressing unsheltered issues. I also want to recommend to the city, based on some research I've looked into about community efforts, geo-fencing. Look into geo-fencing. It's where you utilize geo-fencing to bring together public health communications where a person walks into the downtown area. You can promote businesses, but you can also promote health issues as well. So, thank you. I think that means that's the end of my time.
So it's a means of communication?
It's a means of communication. It's, and what, a person walks into an area you identified, a geographical area, and then it pops up on their phone, information about businesses or about health.
Thank you. Kelly Ward?
Good evening. My name is Kelly, and I live in the Greenmont neighborhood here in Morgantown. I am also an employee at the Morgantown Public Library System. Tonight, I want to voice my personal opposition of a camping ban ordinance in Morgantown. I interact with patrons from the entire community on a daily basis at the library, including the unhoused. I just want to say that you truly don't know how dehumanized and desensitized we have become to human lives and experiences until one day, one of your job responsibilities is to ensure patrons stay awake at the library's public computers. These people are exhausted and have nowhere to go here in Morgantown. The homeless, unhoused, or whatever political terminology you want to apply to these human beings are just as much a part of Morgantown as any one of us, and when human beings are about to be fined $500 or face jail time for not having a home and having no choice but to seek respite in a public place because there is nowhere else to go, I believe that we have wholeheartedly placed our priorities for bettering this community in the wrong camp, simply speaking. In this past Saturday's Dominion Post, I was especially caught off guard by city councillor Louise Michael's capitalistic rhetoric in discussing her support of the encampment ban with language that was loaded with privilege. In reference to the encampments being a supposed safety and health risk, to quote councillor Michael, she stated, "I believe getting people out of that environment can help them move toward resources that provide help, housing, or recovery." As a member of this community, I asked then, "What resources are available for these people, considering Bartlett House closed at the end of June?" Further, councillor Michael stated in the article, "This is affecting the economic development of our downtown. A lot of concerns are coming from our business owners, our residents who want to come downtown. I'm even getting complaints from students, faculty, teachers. I think it's my job to help them." I believe it is the job of the entire city council to help everyone in this community, regardless of your educational status or job. Not doing so is a grave oversight and an example of class-centric privilege, and I believe that this city deserves to have its community members treated equitably. A camping ban will not make me feel safer or change whether I shop in downtown Morgantown. By enforcing this ban, you are criminalizing people who quite simply have nowhere else to go, while also spreading the message that this is a community that prioritizes capital over human lives. I am sincerely asking each of you to approach this encampment ban with a sense of urgency and empathy. To criminalize someone for trying to exist in a public place and simply stating that this encampment ban is a move that will help these people is nothing short of callous and contradictory of what the word "help" actually means. This community needs resources to shelter these people and to truly help these people get back on their feet and not purposefully in a jail cell. Thank you.
I actually have some questions for y'all on the camping ban that I'm hoping you're able to answer tonight. Number one, have any of you ever experienced homelessness yourself? Yes or no question? Councilmember Reed, you proposed the ordinance, have you ever experienced homelessness yourself?
We don't do question and answer parties.
We don't do questions. Okay. So I can't ask any questions about what our key performance indicators are to actually track and measure whether or not this ordinance is going to achieve its goal?
You can ask rhetorical questions, and at a later point, if someone chooses to answer them, they can.
Okay. So it's my understanding that we don't have a lot of lived experience with homelessness in these chambers right here. I would assume people would have mentioned this at this point. That's an assumption, would have liked to have an answer, but that's okay. I understand the goal of this ordinance is to reduce the homeless population, and yet across the country, everywhere we are seeing these encampment bans going to effect, we actually see an exacerbation of the issue if there are not services to meet the need. We heard from the chief of police that they are working with a social worker to implement a program that is not unlike the Houston's crisis response intervention team that has worked to get people linked up with the services that they need and reduce both homeless populations there and people experiencing crises in public. Really, again, the only difference between somebody experiencing a drug addiction or mental health crisis in public or in private is that they have a private place to go to or not. It's not like drug addiction isn't happening among the wealthy, it's not like people don't have mental health crises when they're wealthy and have a home, we just don't see it. So to impose a camping ban like this is really just to make it go away, temporarily. I pointed out the last time I spoke to you how expensive it is to house someone in a for-profit prison in this state. West Virginia spends, I believe, $1,400 per month, more than that, per prisoner in state. To find somebody who does not have money for rent, $500 for every single offense, that's every night that someone has to go to sleep, you're proposing that we go stick the police on them and make them pay another $500 they don't have and face more fines that they cannot pay, which, by the way, any ordinance that uses a fine as a punishment is classist because it's only a punishment for the poor. If you have $500, which most Americans living paycheck to paycheck do not have a random $500, this is not an actual issue. It is only an issue for people who do not have the means. So it is targeting people without the means and imposing additional fines on them to further push them into deeper poverty and impose more barriers to housing access. It is hard to get access to resources to get yourself out of homelessness if you have a criminal record. And telling the police that they must arrest a person and fine them and serve them a fee, a fine like this, instead of linking them up with the services that our police department is trying to do, they have hired a social worker, they are working to link people up with these resources, and this will be an impediment to them. The chief of police also spoke about how we are understaffed and having a hard time accessing and retaining and hiring different new officers. He mentioned a perception issue, and there are many reasons for this perception issue, but how do you think it's going to help if you can no longer help people actually access the resources they need and have to arrest them instead and put them in further poverty and housing insecurity? This whole system just does not work. I'm a BA, I think in systems. This systemically will not work. The only cities in which we have seen camping bans actually lead to a reduction in the housing, or homeless population are ones that already had enough housing and resources for everyone to get their needs met. The last thing I'm going to say is that I know for a fact you've received real-world solutions that have been proven to work in other cities and states across this country. And the last question I'm going to ask you is why are you ignoring solutions that will work and choosing the expensive, wasteful option that is going to cost us more in public defender fees and legal fees and prison fees that we have to go pay a for-profit prison to impose sub-minimum wage labor enshrined in our constitution as a punishment for a crime? Why do you want that instead of just giving people the housing and the resources they need? Thank you.
Hello again, my name is Aaron Shelton. I work in Morgantown with unhoused population, and I am here to oppose the camping ban put forth by this council. As it's been mentioned, members of this council have said that they don't want to see people living outside, and that this measure is meant to help people and connect them with resources for housing and recovery. You all act like you care about unhoused people and their well-being, but that is not true based on this camping ban. And we know that fines and jail time does not bring people closer to housing or recovery. It makes it even more difficult for people to achieve those things. And there is a wealth of research showing that, which members of this council have been pointed towards time after time, and meeting after meeting, and email after email. If you wanted to help people into housing, you consider any of the evidence-based solutions that have been provided to you. You'd work on developing upstream approaches to prevent homelessness and reduce the suffering of your most vulnerable community members, not put forward this reactive policy that only stands to hurt people. You develop a housing department or a housing manager position, as has been suggested with the city, you put money towards low-barrier housing service, or you give folks the basic necessities they need to survive outside while they try to get back on their feet. But none of those things can even get enough support from this council to get on an agenda. You can't say that you want to help people. It's absurd to say that when this council has spent millions upon millions of dollars, this city, over the past few years to get homeless services out of downtown so that the privileged members of this community don't have to witness the suffering of their fellow community members experiencing homelessness. How much has this city spent on this effort? $10 million, $20 million? It's got to be somewhere around there. And with all that money, you could have provided long-term, stable housing to people, maybe every unhoused person in this city. But instead, we have high-barrier services all the way outside of town that aren't accessible to the majority of folks that are on our streets. You aren't doing this to help people, and you're not doing it for the safety of our community. Feeling uncomfortable and being unsafe are not the same thing, and the former is what people in this city are experiencing when they go downtown. They're uncomfortable with what they see. And instead of doing something to help change unhoused people's material conditions for the better, this city is going to move forward with policy that will make it easier to lock them all up for the sake of the community's comfort, not safety. If you want to help unhoused folks, go out there and do it. I, myself, am a direct service provider, but there are, I have many friends here today who are not, who are not in this line of work at all, who still build relationships with unhoused folks, advocate for them, support them, help them, and love them, and that's because that's what you do if you care. Passing a camping ban or even suggesting a camping ban is not what you do if you care. And I know it might seem like I'm up here to chew you out. And I know it might seem like I'm up here to chew you out, and I am. There are other people here who have spoken very eloquently about the reasons why this is a bad idea and what we should do instead, but it feels like nothing we say is going to matter, and you're going to do the terrible dehumanizing stuff that you're going to do one way or the other. But if you're going to do it, at least don't do it under the guise that you want to help people, because you don't and it's not going to.
Hello. Leslie Wilber. I live and I work in Morgantown. I do oppose a proposed camping ban because I think it is just foolish and cruel and a waste of resources. Councilwoman, in your recent interview with the Dominion Post, you mentioned safety as a primary concern. Camping bans have been tried in many cities all over the country, and there's no evidence that they lead to an increase in anyone's safety. And in fact, they make things less safe and more miserable for our unhoused neighbors. Everyone needs to sleep, whether they have permanent shelter or not. Fining people for sleeping in the only places available to them, taking away the basic tools that they need to live, like tarts and sleeping bags, just makes people's lives more dangerous and more precarious. Arresting people can make it harder for them to find stable housing or jobs in the future. It does not make it easier for them to find permanent housing. And those are just some of the ways that a camping ban exacerbates the existing issues in Morgantown. On top of that, camping bans are expensive, and they're difficult to effectively enforce. Policing is expensive. Courts are expensive. Jails are expensive. And tickets and jail time don't make people cease to exist. They don't make safe and affordable housing just appear from nowhere. And there are a lot of people tonight who are speaking or who have already spoken about more evidence-based solutions, like Housing First or other options to effectively mitigate harm. But since I can't ask you a question directly, I would be interested in hearing later your rationale, Councilwoman, for how a camping ban would actually increase safety in Morgantown. Thank you.
We can't hear you.
Hey, one more guy?
We have to shorten the clapping so we can get everybody in, okay? So, Ellie, I said.
I can fix this. I know I can.
Well, I'll hope with shortening. I'll be very brief. Hello, everyone. My name is Ellie. I live in the Stonewood Apartments, and I'm here to say I oppose the camping ban. It's an ineffective solution to the problem, and I know for a fact you were given resources at a previous meeting that outlined step-by-step, data-driven solutions to the issue, and you've seemed to have chosen to ignore them, which is a little distressing. I would urge you to revisit those resources and those materials instead of taking the easy road, which will only exacerbate the perceived issue. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Let's see. Oh, Laotaw? What is it?
It's Akloahaka.
Akloahaka? Great. Hold.
Ooh, it's much colder in the front of the room than it is out there.
Get comfortable.
So, my name's Akloahaka. I am a law student at WVU. I am in my third year. I live down by the river, and it's included in part of First Ward, although not too many of us live in houses down there. I wanted to share a story that I heard of one of Morgantown's unhoused folks. This person came into Morgantown from out of state. They were living in a 2,000 Chrysler Town and Country without working windows or air conditioning. They worked at Insomnia Cookies in their vehicle that they also lived in. They slept at Menards. They slept at the Flying J, or I think it's a Pilot. They got knocks from cops all of the time, asked to move, just like our folks down by the river. They ate from food banks, but of course, they didn't have a fridge, so you're going to have to put that food somewhere, and it ain't going to be in your van. I can't say they made any bad choices or did any drugs, but what happened when that car broke down? They slept on the streets. They camped on the streets. And when we tend to pass a homeless person on the street, we tend to look away. We don't want to make eye contact, and if you're passing this ban, you are looking away. You're averting your eyes. And like some of you do in these meetings all of the time when people speak, and it is horrible that this person's story doesn't get respect, because this is my story. I came here as an unhoused person, and I camped on your streets. And making it so you don't have to look at homeless people isn't a solution to homelessness.
My name is MJ Crane, and I am also currently a third-year law student, working as a public defender. I decided to come speak today to provide this perspective. I'm not sure if anybody on the council has worked as a public defender. I would like to stress to the council how this ordinance would create an unending cycle of placing the unhoused in jail and making the residents of Morgantown pay for it. The cost to this city would include not only jailing costs, but court costs, public defender costs, prosecution reimbursement, and transportation fees, costs that have been reimbursed to the police department through transporting them to the jail and through hearings. Theoretically, first-time offenders would not be jailed. However, unhoused people are unlikely to be able to pay the fine. Additionally, they lack a permanent address to receive court summons. When a person misses a hearing or they are not able to pay a fine, a warrant is issued out for their arrest. After being picked up, they will be jailed. It is likely that they will be held in jail for 30 days or longer, waiting for their court hearings and before even being convicted. So by the time they plead, they will probably have sat in jail for the maximum sentence, effectively robbing them of the due process that the Constitution grants them. When they make a plea deal eventually and are released, they will be made to pay court costs, which they cannot pay, and another warrant will be issued, and they will be picked up again, and the exact same thing will happen. The last time I checked on the Public Defender Corporation website, it said that every case, a misdemeanor case, is on average costs just under $2,000 representation. If the court has to appoint a court-appointed attorney if the public defender is too busy, that number rises to under $3,000. It would quite literally be cheaper to put these people in hotel rooms. For any council member considering this ordinance, I would just like to remind you of the word "justice" in the criminal justice system. Thank you.
Miles Case.
My name's Miles Case, and I live at 136 Sherman Avenue. Firstly, I'd just like to commend the Morgantown Church for their work on the non-criminal shelter proposal. It's clear to myself and many others that this is a very good step in addressing what is undoubtedly a difficult and complex issue. It is also clear that in order to find any meaningful solution, we must approach the problem head-on and with kindness and compassion rather than allowing, rather than following in the inhumane practices that have made their way into the highest levels of our government. I mentioned at the last meeting that one in three Americans are currently living paycheck to paycheck, leaving many of the people in this very room at risk of facing the same punishments that this council is currently discussing. While that context should not come as a surprise to anyone, even less so should the reality of our justice system. And the agenda is an ordinance looking to ban encampments on public property. The results of this ban would punish the existence of the homeless community with fines that would financially cripple even those who don't already struggle to afford basic human necessities. When they are unsurprisingly unable to pay these fines, they will be sent to jail, where they will be kept until being released back onto the streets with a criminal record and more debt. Mayor Abu Gunam, you actually taught my accounting class my senior year of high school. If I had known then that I would have to use what you taught me to stand in a room with my community leaders to explain why financially punishing people already in poverty is not a viable solution, I would be absolutely heartbroken. With all of these facts in mind, I am led to two possible conclusions. The first is that those that support this encampment ban are not aware of the massive institutional flaws of our justice system. This would lead me to question their ability to perform their duties properly to the community. The second is that you are in fact aware of these realities and the systems that perpetuate them, yet you are actively choosing to play into them. In either case, I strongly urge you all to take these facts into consideration in regards to the encampment ban. In an ideal world, using violence in a predatory legal system to attempt to solve one of humanity's most fundamental issues would never have been an option. I still stand firmly in the camp of opposing the encampment ban altogether, but as it stands now, I ask you all to wait until at the very least there are more resources that actually tangibly exist before considering such a ban. Thank you.
Allison?
Hey, hi. I'm Allison Rigs. I oppose the proposed camping ban, and I have decided to use my time to tell you about my dear friend, a homeless man named David. My son, Miles, who you just met, and I met David on a sweltering hot day in the upper 90s when they were handing out frozen spray bottles to the homeless community. David was asleep in his stoop and absolutely drenched in sweat. I wasn't sure if he was okay, and I wasn't sure what to do. Miles and I decided to tuck one of our frozen bottles into his arms to help cool him down while he slept. We walked by later and saw that David was awake, so we stopped and checked on him. The tears of gratitude in his eyes are something I will never forget. I asked David if very many people stopped and chat with him, and he said no. We parted that sweltering evening with a great big hug and tears in our eyes, and I've never been the same since. As one of the older members of the homeless community, we started checking on David frequently to see if he was okay. My partner, Jason, and I are both avid drummers and noticed that David always carried a drumstick in his backpack. He told us that he hadn't been able to play for six or seven years, so we brought down a few of our hand drums and watched as David turned into a little kid on Christmas morning. We gave, we got David a pair of shoes that actually fit, and he literally jumped with joy. We were able to get David off the streets for a few days when he was losing too much weight from constantly sweating in the heat. And as we checked him into his hotel, the joy and awe in his face will be forever etched in my mind. When my mom brought us a loaf of her famous banana bread, I couldn't wait to bring some to David. His joy at the little things that we take for granted has inspired me so much. We showed David a video of our speeches at the last city council meeting while we were advocating for the homeless community, and he was so touched. The weight that we've seen on his shoulders lifted since we became friends with him is something I will not forget. David came over on a crowded fishing boat from Cuba when he was 21 years old. "No one has ever walked in my shoes. They'll never know what I've been through," he said after seeing our videos. As my family learned about tonight's meeting to discuss the encampment ban, we told David about the city's wish to implement a $500 fine for a first offense and jail time for a second offense for sleeping outside. And we stood with him while his heart broke and ours broke right alongside his. As more and more restrictions have been placed on the homeless community, I sent an email last week to the members of the council, and none of you could answer my email about where the homeless community can currently go to sleep without being harassed, because there is nowhere for them to go. To choose this time, when we were in between having a shelter for homeless people, to enforce a camping ban which comes with a first offense of a fine of $500 on someone who can never pay that, followed by 30 days of jail time for a second offense, is cruel and inhumane to David and to our entire homeless community whose voices and stories will not be heard. Thank you.
Is it Gillespie?
Yes. I'm Jason Gillespie, 134 Sherman Avenue, and I'll be pretty short and sweet here. As a person who has been on both ends of the spectrum of homelessness without hope and now owning a home with new principles and responsibilities, I feel I have an optimistic outlook for those who are homeless and would benefit from assistance and guidance through their hardships with addiction, mental health, and financial hardships. We do not know the circumstances which brought someone to be out on the streets, nor do most of us know what it is like for them living in these circumstances. So you could say that most have a bias toward the homeless population. While they, the homeless, are responsible for their efforts and actions or lack of, we, the city, are responsible for giving them the opportunity to have a choice in making a decision to be on the streets or seek shelter and assistance for their issues, not an ultimatum of "get off the streets or recriminalize" that cannot be fulfilled. The issue for the shitty, the issue, the shitty, the issue for the city should be how do we provide options for having somewhere for them to sleep, clean themselves, apply for services, get social and economic guidance to find a sense of worth and stability in their lives? While we can't do the work for them, we can lay the groundwork for them and extend a hand of compassion and opportunity instead of a swift hand of punishment for existing and the only choice they have. At this time, I oppose the tent and encampment ban and whatever that entails, with fines that cannot be paid and jail time that will only move them further into a harder life by our choice as a city and without any regard to giving them a choice. If there is such hope and compassion in this council, or the powers that be, at least provide the option to not be criminalized and fined for living a life where they have no choice or awareness in the matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's probably my arriving if you can't read it.
So tell me your name.
My name is Aiden Quigley.
Yes, Aiden.
Sorry about that. Yes, Grant Street, that's correct. So, as you know, my name is Aiden Quigley, and like many of you, I live in Morgantown and thus have a vested interest in the homelessness issue. I would like you all to take note of the other people in this room and down the hall. Of those people, three out of five are less than two weeks away from being homeless, at least based on a study by Charles Schwab. As this study suggests, high school classmates, friends, and even my partner have been homeless, just like you and those close to me. Those people have had full lives and experiences and are real people with real stories. Just like you and those close to me, those people deserve water, food, and home. For you to motion to criminalize being without a home, you're creating a space where people of all backgrounds are no longer afforded some of the most basic rights and courtesies despite any potential hardships. You are creating a space where people cannot even get up, set up a gathering of tents. This may move the homeless into prison, but this does not solve the problem. Poverty is a serious problem in West Virginia and in Mon County and is a complex problem that requires care and the input involved. As a citizen, I implore you to use your empathy, as I know you can do, to put yourself in their shoes. And as such, I implore you to cease this motion and attempt to create a more sustainable and considerate conclusion. Thank you.
Lindsey Jacobs.
You all are very articulate. If you hear something and you're about to say the same thing, if you can try to...
Hey, I'm out of breath because I just ran up the stairs. Sorry.
Give yourself a moment.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. So what I was telling people is, after a certain period of time, a lot of people are saying similar things, so anything that anyone can do to either come up with something new or... So, thank you.
So, we all get our four minutes, and we can say whatever we want, even if it's duplicative, because that's what democracy looks like, Jenny. So I'm Lindsey. I live in Daniels District in Woodburn in Ward 5. I love Morgantown. I love living here. I love where I work. I love my coworkers. Many of them are here tonight. I love the folks that I'm organizing with. I love living here. I feel, after being gone from West Virginia for a long time, so very at home here, and that is why I am so deeply invested in seeing Morgantown reach the potential that I know it has. So I want to just say that this is coming, and I've said this before, from a place of love. I feel... I feel like, it's sad that I feel like I need to set the record straight, but no one here who opposes this camping ban wants folks to sleep outside in tents forever. In fact, we'd like for none of our folks to ever have to sleep in a tent or under a tarp or on the street in the rain, in the snow, in the heat ever again. That is like our ideal solution. That is utopia for us. We have very, very different strategies rooted in evidence for how we get there. Criminalization is not how we get there. I'm, I feel funny about telling stories of the folks that I meet on the street, you know, Erin talked about this. I'm not a social worker, I'm a lawyer. But I've really jumped into getting to know the folks on the street, and they are so beautiful. They have these beautiful stories, these beautiful laughs, all these talents. I mean, we have David who can play drums, and they're great storytellers, and I just like so very much enjoy their company. And I'm going to take the liberty and just share about a friend who I've come to love really deeply, who physically cannot sleep anywhere but downtown. She has a physical disability now that keeps her from doing that. She would be arrested every, she would get ticketed or arrested every single night under this ordinance. And I just want to tell you about the work that some of us have done over the course of the past several months to build a relationship with her where, and I want to celebrate Erin because she is so good at what she does. Erin has finally built enough trust with this person, and this person knows we love her and that everything that we're, all these solutions that we're bringing to her, we're bringing, bringing it to her because we love her. And we want her to stay well and stay safe, stay alive. But, but Erin has been able to help her access shelter, and that is of her involition, and that is built entirely on the relationship that I have, others, other providers have with her, and the relationship that Erin is building with her. Bans like this, criminalization, that negative contact with the city destroys that trust. And if you don't have that trust, this is what I've learned in sort of the short period of time of really digging into service provision, if you don't have that trust, we can get nothing done. So when I say a camping ban or criminalization is, it's at odds with achieving housing, that's, that's really what I mean. Because if folks don't trust you, they don't care about your services. Our folks on the street like mostly know we hate, that Morgantown seems to hate them. They know the things that folks say about them. I, like Allison, went to Red Door today to talk to folks about the ban, and folks were devastated. One woman came up to me crying, and she's like, "You telling me this broke my heart." So I think because they're maybe not here and because you are not, most of you are all, most of you are not out there looking in these folks' eyes and being in relationship with them, you don't know how much your rhetoric harms them, how much attempts at criminalization harm our relationships with these folks and harm these folks. I guess the last thing I'll say is that, you know, if we want to look at an example right here in Morgantown, we have a camping ban on both park property, on park property. We enforce it, we get eviction notices. If camping bans worked, we would see less homelessness downtown. So all we have to do is look right here in our backyard to know that camping bans are totally ineffective. We'll be back in six months telling you we told you so. Thank you.
Lydia? Lydia?
Molly Kennedy will be next if someone can start gathering. Good evening. My name is Lydia Milnes. I live in First Ward. I not only live in Morgantown, I work downtown, and I patronize lots and lots of businesses downtown, do, you know, when I have social events in my life, I'm often out somewhere downtown, eating downtown, doing my dry cleaning downtown. I also know a number of you and have met or gotten to know you in a variety of contexts. And my personal belief is that we all agree that homelessness is a problem, and we all want to find a solution. And I believe, and I know there's been some harsh words tonight, and I think people are speaking because there's so much emotion about this, I do believe that, that there is a genuine will to find a solution. I also believe that making it a crime to be poor is not the solution, and I don't think that we should go backwards in that respect. We don't want to have poor houses like used to exist. There are things that can be done, but, but making it a crime to be poor, to say if you're poor, you don't get to sleep, you don't get to have your possessions with you, we're not going to give you a place to leave those possessions or to do that sleeping, that's just, it's, it's fundamentally heartless, I think. And again, I'm not suggesting, I don't actually think any one of you is heartless, and I don't think any one of you is intending to do harm. I think you all want to find a solution, and I've had some conversations with many of you where I believe that you genuinely want to find solutions. I just want to say, this truly isn't the solution. Sending people to jail because they're poor is just not the solution. Thank you.
Molly Kennedy?
My name is Molly Kennedy. I'm the Community Outreach Director with the ACLU of West Virginia. I also live here in Second Ward. We didn't have to be here having this conversation about a camping ban today. When the city endorsed a plan to move services for unsheltered people four miles out of town up a hill, advocates like myself and people with much more expertise and lived experience than me told you that this would make the problem of homelessness so much worse for the city. And honestly, a little bit of listening and political courage and implementing some of the solutions would have gone a long way. Normally, it feels kind of good to tell somebody I told you so, but there's nothing good about what's happening here. You didn't listen to the people in this room years ago. You made the issue significantly worse, and you're about to do it again. The arrogance to, in the face of research and expertise and lived experience, to again push your own cruel, unconstitutional, and maybe worse, ineffective plan is honestly astounding to me. Let's be clear about the timing. The city thinks that because a Supreme Court decision came down, it has green light to double down on the policies that got us here in the first place. As Justice Sotomayor said in her dissent, "For people with no access to shelter, this punishes them for being homeless. That is unconscionable and unconstitutional. Punishing people for their status is cruel and unusual under the Eighth Amendment, though unfortunately, everybody in this room frankly knows that cruelty toward unsheltered people has become the norm in Morgantown." Just because you can, or you think you can, doesn't mean you should. And remember that while it's true that advocates haven't been able to strike these bans down using an Eighth Amendment claim, doesn't mean that sending cops to meet unsheltered people instead of investing in social services won't open the liability floodgates for you. We're going to be watching this very closely.
Cassidy Thompson?
Hi, my name is Cassidy Thompson. I am here to oppose the camping ban. I was going to come in here and talk logistics about how there really aren't housing resources for people and funding available right now, but instead, I want to talk about the narrative that people don't want to accept help. A lot of people have been burned by service providers. A lot of people have been made to feel that they don't deserve help, and I know that very intimately because 10 years ago, I was that person. I lived outside in Morgantown. I used substances chaotically, and I believed that I didn't deserve help, and I was made to feel like I didn't deserve help, so that's how I operated. I had been offered help for a long time, many, many years. I had a three-year-old daughter that I wasn't taking care of, that, and the guilt and shame compounded, making me feel worse and pushing me further into the things that I was doing. And trauma is a really complex thing. I came from an inner traumatic upbringing, as do many of my friends that have unhoused. And I say friends because even though I worked in the field, a lot of the people that I worked with are my friends from high school, the people that I've met, their parents, their uncles, these are people's family members, people's parents, people's kids. And bans like this just prolong homelessness. When someone is in the system, it's really hard to get out of. I've watched my mom get ate up, ate up by the criminal justice system for my entire life, and it's, it's a really hard hole to dig yourself out of. By, by imposing a camping ban, the city is effectively saying that you don't believe that people can change or want to change or deserve help, and you are enforcing this ideology that a lot of people that I work with already have, that they are undeserving. And things like that, and reinforcing ideas like that just pushes people from accessing the resources available to them. It is already pretty difficult without a camping ban to work effectively in the field and get people housed, with the police removing people's camps. When people do get a housing referral, we have to find them again, get them housed, and it's just prolonging the experience. And what a camping ban is going to do is exhaust already exhausted resources. Housing programs in this area are overutilized. There are no more spaces at present. The Fairmont Morgantown Housing Authority just put people in a pool, and they'll call them when the vouchers are available. Rent is the highest it's ever been in Montague County, and people just can't afford it without help. I myself have to take out a second job to afford my rent. It's, it's getting out of, I live in a two-income household. This is insane. And what we need is affordable housing. What we need is a source of income discrimination ban so that people can actually access resources and access housing before we even think about a camping ban. Because right now, as it stands, imposing a camping ban just says, hey, just get out of town because there's nowhere else you can go. And if that's what you want, if that's your goal, just say it. That's all.
Jody.
Hi.
Hi.
Hollingshead?
That's right.
All right.
Hi, my name is Jody Hollingshead. I live in the Second Ward. I am a mother of two young children. I love living in South Park. I chose our home five years ago, and I think everyone here knows that the situation has changed, but my love of my neighborhood and my city has not. I'm still so happy that I can walk downtown with my family and enjoy everything downtown has to offer. I am here to express my opposition to Councilor Michael's camping ban and further criminalization of homelessness. I lived in South Park for almost 20 years. I currently live in a beautiful South Park home I'm privileged and grateful to own. But my first few homes in South Park were apartments that I came this close to losing several times due to insufficient finances, mental health struggles, and admittedly, a handful of poor choices, which I think if we're all honest with ourselves, we've all made a time or two. I had the privilege of making and recovering from these choices, thanks only to the love and support of my family. Not everyone has that support. I think we can all relate to life knocking us on our tuchus once or twice. Most of us can probably also relate to having some sort of support system to get us back on our feet mentally, emotionally, and financially if needed. If you've ever spoken with our houseless neighbors, you'd know that many of them have been knocked down by unexpected circumstances, traumatic events, life, just like all of us. But I'm venturing to guess that most of you haven't had a conversation with any of them. Regardless of these folks' circumstances and how they got there, they are people deserving of basic human needs. There are a lot of issues with the camping ban. I'll just address three. The very language of the ordinance make it, makes it abundantly clear that you don't view our houseless neighbors with any level of humanity at all, and that the aim of this ban is simply an attempt to rid our city of visible houseless people. Section 2, Article 1157.01 of it states, "It is the purpose of this article to prevent harm to the health and safety of the public and to promote the public health, safety, and general welfare." For everyone but the homeless folks, right? Are they not the public? Are they not part of the group of people that you signed up to serve? It's also worth noting that statistically speaking, the general welfare of our houseless neighbors contributes positively to the general welfare of the rest of the community who you're apparently trying to serve. Number two is cost. Thanks to the work of our friends, I now know that incarcerating a person for 30 days costs around $1,500. That's a pretty high rent, don't you think? Number three, camping bans and greater policing is simply not effective. It doesn't work. We've seen it time and again, even in other cities in our very state. Criminalization of homelessness doesn't reduce homelessness. Actual solutions have been brought before you by people who've been doing this work much longer than I have. Solutions that satisfy both sides of this debate, solutions that are more cost-effective than your proposal, solutions that have sustainable, positive results for our houseless neighbors and for the rest of the community. We urge you to put a stop to this cruel and inhumane ban and instead, open yourselves to the conversations around actual solutions that have actually been proven to be successful in other cities just like ours. Thank you.
First Ward, it says.
It's Lumina. I think it's pronounced Lumina. Probably downstairs. Lumina.
Lumina, pardon. Amanda Goddard is going to be up next. Danny's after that.
My name is Lumina Fervante, and I live in the First Ward. I looked up deliterian and park citations in Morgantown City Code, and I found a few things. Starting with Section 52302, there are already nine or more ordinances in effect addressing the issues that you're trying to cite as a reasoning for this camping ban. Logically, if you enforced these, it would already serve these purposes without the indirect but lethal ramifications of your ban. And also logically, when people can't pay this $500 fine, it's going to be even harder for them to improve their situation. So they'll be forced into a second offense, and they will, because they wouldn't be camping if they could pay that. I can't even pay that. I have a dual degree and 10 years' experience and still struggle. So when that happens, I'm glad my tax dollars will pay for their public lawyer, but I'd sure rather they went to restorative measures that solve community problems instead. I want to remind you that the sign in this foyer lobs our city as one which accepts people regardless of their economic status, that there are people and organizations offering you data-driven methods of getting people off the street that do not involve redundant codes. Listen to them. And if you won't, then enforce what you already have. Stop pretending that this ban helps anything other than you feeling uncomfortable when you look at people that you are not helping.
Is Amanda Goddard here? Next up will be Danny Ludwig.
Amanda?
Hi, my name is Amanda Goddard. I live on Marcus Drive. I'm speaking as I oppose a ban on camping. I don't want to see anybody living in a tent outside. It's not an ideal living situation by any means. However, we need to prioritize finding shelter and more housing for these members of our community rather than banning camping, which is the only option these people have. A camping ban will not make anyone safer. It will only further criminalize poverty. Thank you.
Thank you. Danny Ludwig?
Me? Can't hear, sorry.
I can't hear either. Danny Ludwig, Second Ward. Man, Wheezy, I'm swaying back here all the here again, my friend.
I know, I feel it.
Um, what I will say is, I'm not going to come in and say the same thing everyone else said. Y'all know me, you know what I do. You know I'm a recovering drug addict, you know I've been homeless, yada, yada, yada. We don't need to pass this ordinance, no offense, my dear, because it does dehumanize people.
people. But I will say, like everybody here in favor of not passing this, what I do propose is that if it does get passed, you sit with me on City Square in tents and say you knew me, and I'll gladly pay the $500 fine so that my friends that can't don't have to. You know, that's where I'm at with it. You know, I appreciate what you do because I've seen you pick up trash and do things for the community. I appreciate what you do because I've seen you in meetings. I appreciate what Brian does because I know what he does, I've done it with him. And the rest of you, I appreciate y'all being here and having to listen to our shit all the time, you know, but we're going to keep coming. For my own personal well-being, I had to not come for a little while because this stuff kind of gets my blood pressure pumping, and it's just nerve-wracking because we've came in here with solutions like bathrooms downtown, lockers downtown, different things, and like still nothing's been done. I know it's been talked about, I know there's funding that needs to be allocated in the right direction, however it needs to be done. But I think that we still need to come together with a better solution to make Morgantown a better place and help everybody in Morgantown. And I know that I'm a single parent, and I know that I don't make that much at my job for what I deal with on a regular basis, but I do it because I deal with love and compassion for the people that I work with. I'm a paycheck away from being homeless, and I'm a single parent with a kid, you know? I don't get child support, I don't get food stamps because they say I make too much money. You know, so like, I'm literally almost in the same boat as a lot of people that I care about. You know, but I think that we can do better, and I think that we can come together better and find a better solution. I don't own my car, but I pay for my car, so like if I end up losing my place to live, I'm going to live in my car with my kid until I figure out a solution. You know, I'm very lucky that I have people in my life that care about me and would probably give me a place to live until I got like whatever situation figured out, but a lot of people don't have that option. I know that like when I was in the midst of my homelessness and active addiction, my like family didn't care. It's not that they didn't care, but I did a lot of damage, which a lot of people have the same kind of story. I just think that we can do better all together in a roundabout way. We can do better for people that are housed and do better for people that are unhoused, you know, because my rent is outrageous in South Park, but I do love where I live. You know, I just, I wish that we came together better than what we do, and I ask that we look at different directions on how we handle things or how we treat people. But again, I really do appreciate all of you and what you do, and you know, I'll keep fighting the good fight for people that I care about, and I stand with you guys to come up with a solution. But that's all I got. Thanks.
After that will be Joseph Scotty. Ricky, I think you could come in at some point here. I think you could come in at some point. I think you could, I think there might be some chairs. Jennifer, did you want to speak?
I'm on the list.
You're up next. Jennifer Powell and then Joseph Scotty after that.
Jennifer Powell, I live in West Everett, work downtown and shop downtown. I come before you with not a lot to add that hasn't already been said, but I do oppose the ban. I think of two of our houseless neighbors that are mentally ill. They're both elderly. They both sleep outside, they both sleep downtown, and I cannot imagine them incarcerated. I cannot fathom it. The one will not accept a shirt or a coat when hers becomes bedraggled, or not much other than an extra piece of cake. But I cannot imagine her incarcerated. She's probably going to die on the street. I don't know how we can get her housed, but three hots and a cot isn't the way for her. Nor the other gentleman who is unhoused due to a house fire, and he's afraid to be inside. He's probably just going to scream when he goes to jail because he's going to be afraid that it's going to burn down around him. He only can live outside. We've gotten him tents, we've gotten him a new coat. He does the best he can with what he's got, and that's all that any of us can do. But criminalizing these people is awful. It's inhuman, it's not the way to fix it. It just isn't. And I urge you to withdraw this or not pass it, and I think you've heard from a lot of constituents that really don't want to see it passed. So I hope that you'll listen, and I hope that we can find a better solution. And I ultimately don't know what it is. I'm trying. I'm working with them, we're trying to work, look into starting a shelter or something, but I just, criminalization isn't it. I spoke to a gentleman this week that has received eight trespasses in two weeks. He was two fines away from getting his license back and being able to go back to work, and he just feels very downtrodden right now and very criminalized, and he's got a lot of issues. And it just, it doesn't help to give people fines and jail time, and then they're just turned back on the street, and then more fines and more jail time, and it's very expensive too, as many people have said. So just, I urge you to please listen and don't do this. That's all I've got.
Joseph Scotty in Woodbury. I don't know if the officer can give these to the members. After the Supreme Court decision, I think it's Lakeside or Lakeland Research Partners did a survey, 72% of Americans do not find that fining and imprisoning people for homelessness is a solution. We've got a lot of folks here that feel the same thing. I'm a psychologist. I've been working with the people you don't want to look at for 50 years. People with the most severe disabilities, mental health problems, intellectual disabilities, autism, trauma, some of whom are that short from being out on the street like these people are. There's a sign on Dunnot's Boulevard that says, "Welcome to Well City." Bologna. This is not Well City. I was talking to my daughter about her class and some of the, she's a schoolteacher here, some of the activities she's going to be doing this fall. We're going to ask kids what they want to be when they grow up. You know what? None of them is going to say, "I want to be a homeless drug addict." These people are not here out of career aspirations. They're here out of some really bad things happening in their lives. If you talk to the people on the street, yeah, we got a drug problem, but people are there with drugs for two reasons. Drugs that led to homelessness, homelessness that led to drugs. And a lot of people are not in homes because they've been abused physically, sexually, emotionally, domestic violence, fires, as somebody mentioned. They can't go back to homes. People in their families have kicked them out for one reason or another. Some of the folks that I've talked to downtown, LGBTQ issues, kicked out of their families. That's not a choice. That's kicked out the door, and they have nowhere to go. The mental health issues among these folks are dramatic, some of the worst that I've seen in institutional settings that I've worked in since the mid-1970s. And what you're proposing is going to get people to go to prison, which has become the new mental health institution and the new poorhouse. And I was a psychologist, the lead psychologist, in a Pennsylvania state prison. I wouldn't let my dog live there. It is the worst conditions I've seen, and I've been in this field for 50 years. And what you're asking is to put people who don't really have any options to eventually end up in prison. 50% of people that go to prison are back within one to five years. You're going to get them onto a cycle of going back to prison. And the conditions in prison by corrections officers and other staff are so abusive, you're going to triple the amount of abuse these folks have felt and worsen the problem. This is not an answer. You've heard plenty of people who are interested in finding answers. Mr. Brammer, who gave us the shelter ID here at the beginning, I think that's worse than investigating, but it's also the same sort of problem. Look where we're going to put it, Scott Avenue. These folks are downtown, as Molly Kennedy mentioned. That's not what we should have done, is move services where people can't get to them. The latest folks don't even want to get on a bus or take a taxi. Thank you.
Carla, is it Chernicki? Carla?
Carla? Carla?
Sheila.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? So please, in order there, come on up.
Yes, yes, I'd love to speak.
Well, we just got to wait. We've got this person, this person, and then your third, okay? And if you would give your name and your address.
Yeah.
Please, get off the phone, off the computer.
Yeah, we got to have, we got to have one at a time here, so.
Okay. My name is Wayland Hengler. I live on 223 Hagan Street in South Park. Am I talking in appropriate distance from the mic?
Could you, could you say your name one more time?
Yeah, Wayland Hengler.
Okay.
Do you want me to spell it?
Yes.
J-N-G-L-E-R? No. Wayland, like the country singer Waylon Jennings, Hengler like H-E-N-G-G-E-L-E-R.
Perfect. Wayland is your first name, we got it.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I am here representing current, other current medical students. I'm a medical student, I also hold a master's in public health. So I'm representing a couple of different people who, along with myself, wanted to be here, but you know, they couldn't. I'm also part of the Mushroom Street Medicine Group at WVU, and I volunteer for health rights. So over the past year that I've been in school here, I've been lucky enough to build connections with our houseless neighbors. While obviously a lot of people become houseless for a lot of different reasons, I do want to say a few words about what is probably by far the most stigmatized reasons, which is drug use. As a medical student, I want to remind people that addiction is a disease. If you have not struggled with serious drug addiction and know firsthand how supremely difficult becoming sober can be, you can't cast judgment on people who are having this disease. While I've never personally had to deal with addiction, I have endless respect and empathy for people who have and do. So yeah, addiction is a medical problem that requires a bio-psychosocial solution, and criminalization is definitely not that answer. Besides that, covering up the problem doesn't really fix it. If anything, it makes it worse. So if we have, the camping ban will drive people outside of the city when they have nowhere else to go, so this is going to drive people away from healthcare resources, which will make the problem worse. Most of the homeless population needs access to good stigma-free healthcare, whether it's for physical disabilities, mental health care, wound care, or substance use treatment. By driving people out of the city, we make healthcare even more inaccessible than it already is, and this would run the serious risk of causing higher rates of overdose and death, as well as dangerous preventable infections. Not only is the human cost of care, this would also raise healthcare costs. So I just wanted to kind of end with saying that we do need a sustainable and real solutions that involve affordable housing. As other people have noted, this ban will not only cost the city more money, it is also deeply inhumane, and it's horrifying that you would value aesthetics over human lives. Thank you.
There was someone...yes, thank you.
I'm Sid McGuinness. You guys have already heard from one of my very best friends.
Could you say your name one more time?
Sid McGuinness.
Thank you.
Like Sid the Sloth, if it's easier to remember. You guys have already heard from one of my very best friends, Ms. Hall, earlier, who informed you about her own story of coming here. I, like her, am starting my third year of law school here in August, and just to give you that kind of starkness, this can happen to anybody. Homelessness isn't just something that happens distantly from you. It's a very real thing that can happen to anyone, no matter the circumstances, because no one chooses this, it happens to people. And if you're surprised by the turnout you've gotten today and how long you've sat here and listened to people tell you how much they don't want this, if you're surprised by that, you shouldn't be. When you attack such a large part of a community unjustifiably, you should never be surprised that the rest of the community is ready to show up and call you on it. If everyone here today didn't convince you already, I urge each and every one of you to spend one night camping, as you've described it, and see how horrific and how awful that is and how no one would choose that for themselves if they had any other option. And the option you're trying to replace it with is criminalization, fining them $500, which we know they can't afford because they can't pay rent to live anywhere but where they do. I just think that if you're going to approach that kind of decision and think that you're not going to cause any damage, you should put yourself through it and see the reality. Earlier a second ago, I just said that you shouldn't be surprised by this turnout and the amount of people that have shown up to protest against this and tell you that it's not the right way, and to give you detailed scientifically-backed ways to solve this in a better way that doesn't cause harm. If you go through with this ban, you shouldn't be surprised either when you're replaced. Thank you.
All right, I'll be good. I won't be at all. Back to the list.
Good.
Back to the list, please. I'll listen to you if you're talking. I hate clocks. I want to thank everybody for coming out. It's really nice that, you know, I know people care, but maybe we don't know how to fix that. Maybe some people got it fixed. If you have all these people here, okay? If you had the homeless people here, and you had Hyde here, and you had, what is it, the homeless correlation here? And, you know, it's unacceptable the way we're treating homeless people. I've been homeless two years down here. Two years. And I'm a laid-back guy, I don't like to get agitated, but I don't like seeing my friends hurt. That could be your daughter, that could be your sister, that could be your brother. Come on. There's easy ways to fix it. Use red. How much property you got? How many buildings you got? We can't put something up? We can't even put nothing together? As a city, a great city like this, we can't put nothing together? We have walks of all life here. I don't see anybody getting killed, but what I do see, I see when it's 25 degrees out there and someone don't have a coat or a blanket. I see cops and workers mowing stuff over, everything they got. I see people shitting and pissing all over the city. I see trash all over the place. I see rats this long, this long, down there, running in the city. I see your workers hiding. I see your workers throwing shit away. They threw my stuff away. What are you going to do? Who's going to believe a homeless person? Nobody, because they don't care. I just want you to care. Get out and talk to these people. These homeless people will be the first ones to help you out if you had a flat tire, if... There's no, I mean, I've got friends out there that's worked in the coal mines. Most of these people can't read, some of them can't write, I can't spell, but I can do a bit about anything. It'd been a lot easier singing a song, but anyway. You know, I know, you just can't put the finger on one person. You know what I mean? You got to work together. If you don't know what's going on, maybe you don't know what happened out there. Maybe you don't know an officer came out and picked the homeless guy in the ridges and said, "I said, get it." That is unacceptable. I mean, come on. Would you want your family member treated like that? Or anybody? Anybody? I mean, we're here. We don't do that. I mean, that's unacceptable. This whole world's screwed up. I mean... little buildings off the office, work out a deal. Put a little path, I don't care what you, put some bathrooms out there. Put them porta-potties around, so they can use the bathroom at least and be human." Thank you. I'm not yelling at you, I'm not scolding you, but no one has vision. Nobody. Thank you.
Do you, do you have a name you'd like to?
Oh, yeah. I forgot. I thought everybody knew.
I know you have a name, I'm just saying.
Well, I know, I know.
Do you have one you'd like to offer up? Because we're...
Well, I'm kinda tucking right now. I'm just playing. Brian Miller. And thank you, thank you for letting me speak. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
How you doing? Doing a pretty good job.
He's one of the good ones. Right. Who? Yeah, yeah, come on up.
That's too bad. Yeah, I know it is. Mary Ann Foles, and I think you all know me. I am, excuse me, I wanted to share the same request with you all on this topic that I've shared with the county commission. And that is that there, you know, as a, someone who's, you know, I'm running for county commission, so I've talked to a lot of people all around the county, and I get a lot of ideas. And I know those ideas aren't making it to you all. I know they're also not making it to the county commission. So, my request of them, and I would have the same request of you, is to hold a public forum. I know you get a lot of ideas here today, but a forum where, and I would go in with the county on this, and, and the other cities if they'll join. And the topic is, what are your ideas for solutions? Now, there's a lot of people who have offered solutions. I've heard, as I've talked to people, a lot of reasons why many people don't agree with the solutions that have been offered. So, you're gonna hear that, and you might hear 45 bad ideas, but you also might get five gems. So, that's my request. Work with the county. I know they're not gonna come to you. You're probably gonna have to go to them, because they're not gonna come to you. And, and, and then try to get this, try to get some ideas that are really gonna work and that people can, can agree to, and we can make some progress. Like the, you know, Brandon tonight, I think that was a, a start. There's a lot of other good ideas out there, and I think we oughta involve the public in, you know, in more than just this community, this setting, more than just the city. Thank you.
Sir, anyone else wishing to speak? Somebody wants to come double dip? Come on, Annie. Just make it. Just use your, your balance of your time, just a little bit.
I was under 33 seconds last time. I'm Keith Richards, and I'm here to say, I was here when Ms. Michaels first proposed this idea, and it's my understanding from what she's saying, that she was concerned about rapes and thefts and criminal activity going on inside camps, homeless people and homeless people. And a lot of people are very upset about the raids, as well they should be. Somebody comes along to your tent and takes it, your last picture grandma is gone, and that's it. Bye-bye. No fixing it. But I think there's been, although I hate to put on councilwoman, that doesn't need to be there, because the intention was good, and there are problems of violence in the camping communities. And we just need to work on the ordinance, perhaps. Just a thought. Amen.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
I'll go, Dr. Phil.
You do the whole process. All right.
Hello. My name's Daniel Leitner.
Say it one more time.
I'm Daniel Leitner.
Hi, Daniel.
I was here last time. Uh, seems maybe outnumbered up here, but, uh, I wrote actually a speech this time instead of just going off the top, so I can nail every, everything at once, so. Ladies and gentlemen, today, I stand before you to voice my support for city council's proposal to implement a camping ban expansion in our city in Morgantown. This proposal is not merely a reactionary measure. It is a thoughtful, forward-thinking initiative aimed at preserving our public spaces, ensuring the safety and well-being of all residents, and addressing the multifaceted challenges posed by unregulated camping. Firstly, let us consider the impact on our public spaces. Our parks, alleyways, sidewalks, and open areas are designed to be shared by everyone in the community. They're places where families gather, children play, and people of all ages enjoy the natural beauty of our city. However, unregu, unregulated camping can severely degrade, degrade these spaces. It leads to litter, environmental damage, and the deterioration of facilities that are meant for the enjoyment by all. By implementing this plan, we can restore and maintain the cleanliness and accessibility of our public spaces, ensuring that they remain welcome and safe for everyone. Moreover, the safety concerns associated with unregulated camping cannot be overstated. It is unfortunate reality that homeless campers often lack the necessity, the necessary infrastructure to ensure basic safety and hygiene. Without proper sanitation facilities, the risk of public, public health issues such as spread of disease increases significantly, especially in areas close to needle exchange programs. Additionally, the lack of security can make these area, areas hotspots for crime and violence. By enforcing, enforcing a camping ban, we can mitigate these risks, creating a safer environment for both the campers and the broader community. We must also address the humanitarian aspect of this issue. Many individuals who resort to camping do not do so out of necessity, driven by homelessness, economic hardship, and drug addiction. Simply banning camping is not a complete solution. It must be accompanied by con, comprehensive support measures. This proposal includes provisions for increased funding or shelters, affordable housing initiatives or social services. By doing so, we need not to turn our backs on those in need, but rather provide them with the safer, more stable alternatives. This holistic approach insur, ensures that we are addressing the root of homelessness rather than just the symptoms. Furthermore, the economic implications of regreg, relegated camping are significant. The costs associated with cleaning up camped areas, repairing damaged infrastructure, and addressing public health concerns constrain our city's budget. These resources could have, could be better utilized in proactive measures, such as improvising housing, or improving housing and social services. By implementing this ban, we are making a prudent financial decision that will benefit our community in the long run. We also must consider the perspectives of local businesses and residents. Many have expressed concerns about the negative impact of unregulated camping on their neighborhoods and livelihoods. Increased foot traffic, litter, and safety concerns can deter customers and decrease property values. By enforcing a camping ban, we can foster a more vibrant, attractive, and economically stable community. In conclusion, the camping ban expansion proposal is necessary and responsible measure that addresses the pressing issues facing our city. By support, supporting this proposal, we would be making a commitment to a cleaner, safer, and more compassionate community. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak?
Hi, my name is Tricia Dicenza. I didn't really plan to speak tonight, but, anyway, as you know, that I have been in front of you many times to complain. And actually, this is the first time that I want to say thank you for finally listening to your constituents. The business owners, property owners, and, and residents of downtown have just had so much criminal activity down here that we just, we can't take it anymore. And they speak of the homeless, and I know it's a very sad case, but the destruction that's going on to our property and our rights are being violated too by that. There has to be a happy, happy medium somewhere, and I just wanna say that I think this is the first step toward finding a solution. Okay, so, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. So, anyone, come on up?
I'll try not to keep going. Everybody wants to dip during, so you know.
Oh, the fellow, the fellow behind you wanted to have a chance.
You're hanging it up right now.
Very briefly, 'cause it's your second term, okay?
Well, these are failed programs. There ain't a program, federal program. We print the money. Are you shitting me? We print the money. We, we send a million, million, probably more than that, trailers. These people would be happy with a fucking outhouse. And I'm not saying that to be mean, I'm just telling you the truth. I mean, I've been pushed, I've been harassed, I've been a drug dealer, I've been this, I've been that. No, I'm not. I smoke weed. My only conviction is, I see a beaut, you're beautiful, but, and you are too, all of one is beautiful. But anyway, the thing is, come on, you can fix this. Look, if, if we take a program, okay, how many, like, like you have houses, you're right, and then, fix them. Work with HUD. Make some money. Why not? Or take one big building, put all the homeless there. That way, first a problem, cops don't, gotta make a big deal, they know where everybody's at. We got all the trouble in one spot. You know why no homeless people showed up here? It don't matter. It don't matter. They ain't gonna do nothing. They don't care. They don't care.
Appreciate your comments, and then let's get this fellow in that was behind you.
I didn't mean to jump in front of him, but I figured I'd take care of what's up. Thank you.
And I happen to be here on, I guess, a very hot subject of the camping ban. I'm here to let you guys know, yes, I'm in support of it. During the course of this meeting tonight, as committee of the whole, nowhere did I see or hear or read that this camping ban is subject to one select set of people, as has been being pertained. I'm assuming it's gonna be for everybody. This is also includes, you, you guys already got laws on the books right now for different things. As I said, I'm a citizen here in Morgantown. If I go downtown, I pick up a rock, I throw it through a window of business down here, I gotta pay a consequence of some kind. Everybody is being held to some sort of responsibility, and I think that's what we're getting to. I heard a great idea of the 10 by 12 units. Wonderful idea. Think it should be looked at. There's other ideas, too. I know one word that I keep hearing is solution this, solution that. As far as the homeless go, there is no solution. It'll always be here. But we can come up with ideas, different ideas, to somehow curb it a little bit, to help somebody. With this ban, I also heard a person, found a person on the streets during a hot summer day. They went and took an ice bottle, put it on them. They were thankful. If there was this ban in place, that person might not have been asleep on that, on the street, having the chance of being hit with, with heat stroke and being rushed to the They could've had a place right someplace here. Like I said, this is all one ideas. I think the ban should be in place for safety. We got business owners that are suffering. This ban is just like an idea. I'm gonna wrap up with these two thoughts. Always remember, a desert, like the Sahara Desert, it all started with one grain of sand to become that whole desert. This idea of the ban is that small grain. And the other thing I'd like to have everybody remember, at times, the needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few. Morgantown has 32,000 people in it. We gotta think of others, too, and think of our homeless neighbors, too. But sometimes, as that statement says, the needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few at times. I hope you guys think right on this. That's all.
Thank you.
We're not really on seconds here. How about 10?
Hi, it's Megan. Yeah, it's Miles. I just wanted to say that man wouldn't be on the street because he'd be in jail, because we don't have the resources, which is why I would say, get the resources and then talk about passing the ban. So, it seems like we're pretty much in agreement here. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else new wishing to speak? Yes, please.
I'm new. My name is Anna. I, thank you.
Oh, I think it worked, so that was why. No, people, what, what it is, is that microphone goes to people who are listening at home?
Uh-huh.
So, if, they can't, they can't hear you unless you have that close.
Perfect, thank you.
It just doesn't amplify within the room.
Room, gotcha. My name is Anna. I live on Hawthorne Ave. in Evansdale. I have lived in Morgantown my entire life, and I didn't always love living here for reasons very unrelated to the topic today, right? I think, like so many people, small towns get a bad rap, right? Morgantown is a really special place in that it's not just a small town, it's a really diverse small town. And I have seen it change so much over my lifetime here, in some ways that have been really great, and in some ways that I think could be better. Taking measures to support community infrastructure isn't just something that provides benefit to individuals that don't have the resources they need to attain housing, attain sustainable employment, get the treatment that they need. It supports all of us, right? If we want to enjoy Pota, right, if we want to enjoy the businesses downtown, we need to have access to bathrooms, right? Those are hours-long trips. We need access to free restrooms. We need access to free water. Those are just basic human needs. And those are also strategies that provide support for individuals that don't have access to those things. Providing Sharps containers, which was suggested at the last meeting, is frankly also just a public access issue for individuals who need insulin to survive because of diabetes. They don't have a place to get rid of their needles when they're out in public. Needles in plastic bags don't go real well together. They tend to fall out. It's hard to say what needle in the street came from wherever. The issues that have been listed by property owners seem to be related to litter, seem to be related to needle concerns, and those are issues that can be properly solved through community infrastructure, something that so many of us have time and again advocated for. And those are happy medium solutions. A camping ban is not. It is not going to change the homelessness issue. It's not going to help someone get housed. It's not going to push anyone towards resources. Making somebody's life more difficult doesn't necessarily make them want to get help more. That's just not how it works. And I think that it speaks volumes, the number of folks from the community who came out tonight to express dissent for the proposed camping ban. You have a community behind you who are presenting alternative solutions, who are ready to do the work, and choosing to do a camping ban is frankly poor leadership, and it's lazy. I think that it also speaks volumes that the only people who have spoken tonight in support of this seem to be folks who are very active on the Greater Morgantown Forum. So, not, not a, not a great place to get things done. And so, I just ask you, please don't choose the easy option, please don't choose the lazy option. option, choose the option that involves good leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? We probably should get to some order of business here. Thank you all for coming to speak. We're gonna shut the public portion. Thank you. All right. Items for discussion. Item A, an ordinance providing for the zoning reclassification of certain parcels of real estate in the first ward of the city of Morgantown, tax district nine, tax map forty-eight A, parcel twelve, commonly known as fourteen thirty-three Dorsey Avenue, from R1, single-family residential district, to a B2 service business district, amending Article thirteen thirty-one of the Planning and Zoning Code of the City of Morgantown, as shown in the exhibit here to attach, and declared to be a part of this ordinance, as if the same were fully set forth And we have a planning director here.
Good evening, council. The Honorable staff found the proposed map amendment to be consistent with the city's land management plan and the planning commission record and approval seven zero. One note, in the description that was just provided, I just wanna clarify, I believe what the planning commission recommendation was, was a B1 zoning designation for fourteen thirty-three, but in the description in the packet, it wasn't B2. So I just wanna make sure that that's, that's correct.
So which is it?
It's B1.
Okay.
That was the request, yes.
This is one the council recently voted against moving to B2, they came back to planning, asking for B1, and that was recommended by the planning.
That was not much.
What was the vote?
Yes, that was a request.
What was the vote?
On the planning commission, seven zero.
It was unanimous.
For B1.
All right. So, is this something that people want to discuss, or is this something we want to just move to? Yes, please.
What, so last time, what was it, it was fourteen, and it's seven zero? Four.
The vote on planning commission.
Correct. Changing it to B1, changed their minds in what way?
Smaller buildings, different uses, more appropriate for being near a school, still allows them to use for generally what they wanted to use it for.
So everybody wins theoretically.
So, is, if there aren't any other questions, then we can move it to the agenda? Yes, move to the agenda.
Sure.
All right. Item B, an ordinance providing for the zoning reclassification of certain portions of parcels of real estate in the fourth ward of the city of Morgantown, tax district twelve, tax map fourteen, parcels twelve point one, thirteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, twenty, twenty-one, and four hundred and ninety-eight, and tax map fifteen, parcels eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, ninety, ninety-two point one, ninety-three, ninety-three point one, ninety-three point two, ninety-three point three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, two hundred and seventy-seven, two hundred and seventy-eight, two hundred and seventy-nine, from OI Office and Industrial District to R3 multifamily residential district, amending Article thirteen thirty-one of the Planning and Zoning Code of the City of Morgantown, as shown in the exhibit here to attach, and declared to be part of this ordinance, as if the same were fully set forth herein.
So this ordinance would rezone approximately nine point three acres of land generally south of Evans Street and north of University Avenue to an R3 district, and while there are no active site plans available, that staff are reviewing, the developer has made, their intent is to develop the property that's vacant right now into townhomes. Upon review, staff found the applicant's request to be keeping with the city's land management plan, and the planning commission recommended approval when the vote was six, six zero.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
I wasn't the one that voted against this.
This is over by Metro Towers, like the big apartment complexes, they have some vacant land, they wanna put in townhomes, missing middle housing that we keep talking about, seemed like a good use.
Sounds like a good idea to me.
Worth considering, yeah.
You can, you'll consider?
Yes.
All right. So would you like to move it to the agenda so that you can consider it?
Certainly.
Or would you like to talk about it or ask any more questions?
I'm good.
Let's move to the agenda.
All right, we're moving it to the agenda. Item C. A resolution of the City Morgantown City Council directing the study of availability of affordable housing in Morgantown and develop recommendations, policies, programs, and/or initiatives to preserve and increase supply of affordable housing opportunities in the community, and I believe Counselor Butcher put this forth. Do you have something you wanted to say about that?
I have a lot of difficulty hearing y'all. I'm not sure.
It's, it's the...
Yeah, we're on that resolution.
It's the affordable housing resolution, and just anything that you would like to say about that?
No, I think we're overdue for a study. I would appreciate it, we would undertake one, I think that's, that's all.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything they wanted to say about this?
I have some misgivings in that, I think it's less than four years ago that we had a very comprehensive housing study done. I don't see significant change in the community in terms of our housing stock that's gonna make much of a difference. If we're gonna do something here, I'd really like to see a more specific purpose, rather than just another, let's go out and measure how many houses we have.
I agree with you, Neil, but, you know, we've kinda talked around a lot of these solutions for a long time, it seems like a lot of the pushback that I've received is bad around not having the appropriate identification of what the issues are. I agree with you, I think we know what the issues are, but in the absence of being able to do anything, I'd rather do something. I believe that study was done twenty seventeen, wasn't it? So seven years ago?
I really don't remember.
It's been at least in the last six years.
Why don't we...
I'm sorry?
It's been at least in the last six years. Why don't we send a copy, I asked for a copy in Reddit recently, 'cause I was curious, why don't we send that to everyone, so that could be kind of a basis, so we could start with that as like a baseline, and then see what we can do on top of that?
I think there's, I think there's potential here with the development of recommendations, so at a minimum, if the study has been done, then that means we have the available information, at which point we'd be able to be given some direction with the information we have, to have recommendations on how we could potentially move forward. We could utilize our resources that we currently wouldn't have been able to access, while also being able to continue the conversation.
I've mentioned several times, our Housing Advisory Commission, and re...
Purposing it.
...digging them with purpose, is that something that can be worked into this to, I mean...
I was assuming that would be, that would be a low-hanging fruit, would be repurposing that, 'cause it already has structure, and then it could have...
Yeah.
It could be...
Bill's more recently worked with that group, and it, we would need to change the purpose a bit, and we would need to change the membership a bit.
No, the membership is good. The purpose, if you read down through it, is very good. The difficulty is having something to present to them, in terms of them to take and advise, they're not, they're advisory, they're not a group that's supposed to bring things to us and lay it at our doorstep. We need to come up with whatever the solutions.
So we could bounce what comes up from this studying to that group? But I think you're gonna have to look at membership, 'cause I don't think it's exactly in line with what you would want.
I think you need to look at membership there, too, I believe it's okay, but all right.
Does being advisory not include making recommendations? I mean, the bicycle or pedestrian board or advisory boards, and they make recommendations about pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure and things like that.
Human Rights Commission makes recommendations and notices the absence of recommendations.
Yes.
Groups make recommendations, for sure.
I think there's no action tonight.
Right.
It gives us three weeks to continue these conversations. 'Cause I feel like we all want the same thing, it's just not...
Yeah.
We don't get there.
The bones are a good, the bones are a good starting point, to discuss, to move to the agenda. Move to the agenda?
Fine.
Okay.
Sure.
Item D, an ordinance of the city of Morgantown amending Article one five three of the city code entitled Human Rights, to change member qualifications for the Human Rights Commission. It sounds as though this might be something that we want to move back to the Human Rights Commission for further consideration. Is that the type of action that...
I would ask counsel.
Yeah?
I would ask counsel.
Yeah. Brian, would that be all right, to move it back to the Human Rights Commission for further deliberation, and then they can send it back to us with what they...
Yes.
Might suggest. Okay. I believe it was done with the best of intentions, I just think we need to send it back and have you all weigh in on it.
I had several questions and concerns about changing the membership of that as well, most of which were already mentioned, one of which is, this is one of those commissions that's like quasi-judicial, they do have the ability to hear cases and make determinations or rulings, and that was one of my bigger concerns about opening up to people outside of the city.
Well, this particular, it would be people out of the side of the city, but they would have a connection, the way this one was written, that they would have a connection to the city, right? They would work in this purpose.
That was a recommendation, yeah.
Yeah. So, we'll see what we, we'll see what we get, and then we can make further comments. Is that good with everybody? Yeah? A little bit back to the...
Yes.
Okay. Then item E is an ordinance of the city of Morgantown, creating a new article of city code entitled Camping on Public Property, and Lucy Michaels.
Thank you, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I actually had, I actually had quite a bit to prepare for the night, but I'm just gonna ask to have this moved to agenda, that the, this ban, camping ban, is for safety and health reasons, and I believe that this is in the best interest of our city, to keep our city safe, to help our downtown, to... to help move this city forward from some of the crime that's happening. And I'm not really, I also wanna discuss, I keep hearing there's no, you know, there's nowhere for people to go. We're gonna have two shelters here shortly, with Catholic charities and the Rainbow House as a shelter, but we also have thirty, we also have thirty treatment, housing, addiction referral services around our city in Mon County. So, on that note, it's been a really long night, so I'm just gonna ask to have this moved to the agenda.
I have an issue with moving it directly to an agenda, there's a lot of things we've been talking about, and there's a lot of things that have been asked for that get postponed, postponed, postponed. This was immediately put on committee of the whole. I haven't had a chance to discuss things with the city attorney, I have not had a chance to discuss things with the folks who would be responsible for enforcing this, our Public Works Department, our Police Department, I cannot see what the absolute rush is. If our concern is a lot of the crime that's happening, I have said time and time again, vandalism is already illegal, breaking and entering is already illegal, drug use is already, like, most of these things that are not camping, they are not, and I'm not in favor of encampments, I ran for city council twice on, I am not in favor of encampments, and I caught a lot of crap from it from most of the people in this room. But, that being said, that has always come with the caveat that there is somewhere for people to go, and right now, we simply don't have it. And what I'm hearing is not, I don't wanna see people with a blanket, what I'm hearing is, a lot of the activities that we are seeing are causing destruction to my property, they are making me unsafe, uncomfortable. That will not be solved with this ban, enforcing a lot of the things that we already have. We have laws against all sorts of things, several people pointed it out tonight, there are laws against these things already. If I broke someone's window, if I broke into someone's property and left all of my belongings behind, like, I would, I would be in jail, I guarantee it, but that's not, we're not talking about the same thing here. Someone using a blanket to sleep somewhere and someone causing destruction are not the same thing.
On this isn't, I don't believe this is about blankets, but...
It literally says that in the ordinance.
Talking to the mics, are they on my ears?
You didn't think the mics were...
It's for the area.
Yeah, they were.
So, again, we owe it to... For over a year now, I've taken complaint after complaint after complaint for residents, students, high school students, college students, parents, business owners, residents. They're tired of the crime. And, and the, there are people that generally fear for their safety on these rail trails.
And plenty of the people causing those issues have a home to go to at night.
Anyway, I don't want, I believe this deserves a vote, because we owe it to those residents.
And I'm asking to have an opportunity to discuss it with our staff, who would be in charge of enforcing this.
If we move this forward, this would be on the August twentieth.
Yeah, there's plenty of...
That's, that's over three weeks from now, I think that's plenty of time if we do move it to the agenda, to have these issues researched.
I would ask the question, then, if we would be able to put together a workshop ahead of time, to discuss possibilities on how we could bring it forward to meet everybody. So the problem with the workshop is we don't have a meeting between now and the twentieth, so it would have to be outside one of our designated times.
A workshop about...
Addressing this ordinance, and dealing with the unsheltered population.
We have, when you say dealing with the unsheltered population, are you saying they have nowhere to go, Joe, because there are gonna be Catholic charities to go to? And right here, if you guys want me to, I'll read the list of thirty service...
I feel like you, I feel like that, you brought up the concerns that we have with some of our residents, and you want them to have their day to be heard. We've heard a lot of people here tonight, and I feel that it was being the best interest, we had discussed the possibility of having a workshop, but due to time constraints and our meeting being canceled next week, it may be beneficial if we all discuss the possibility of meeting at another time before our next meeting, to discuss possibilities or options, as opposed to pushing through.
I, I don't see a problem with doing both.
I'd like, yeah, let's get it on the agenda for a vote. We could do the, if you wanna discuss it, we could discuss it before August twentieth.
I agree.
Sure.
We don't need to delay this.
I would be in favor of the workshop, I am in favor of putting it on the agenda, and finally getting this solved one way or the other. You know, I appreciate, I appreciate all I heard today, I appreciate the positions that you're trying to take with trying to do what is good for the community, and to lessen the difficulty that we're having. I don't know that this is the right solution, but I don't know that this is not gonna make a significant difference in a number of circumstances. You get the same emails I do, you know, that there's another side to this, you see the things that are being thrown at us in terms of demonstrating the difficulties. thrown at us in terms of demonstrating the difficulties. You've heard from WDU, you've heard from downtown, you know, the Main Street Morgantown. We need some sort of resolution. The idea of allowing people to set up a tent anywhere they want is not the right solution. Now, how do we administer that restriction, and how do we bring these people to compliance? Or, at least, how do we consider them in some sort of humane way and do what's best for them, but still do what's best for the community? And then I would also suggest that, you know, we are a community of, who said tonight, 32,000? Greater Morgantown is over 100,000. Where are these people, and where are they helping? And how do we involve the community, quotation marked, in this solution? Yeah, let's put it on the agenda. Let's have our workshop, and then let's see what we can do.
So, so I've been listening, and I'm concerned about some issues that then would be good to talk about in this workshop. One would be this idea of Housing First, which we've had in this community for a really long time, probably at least 15 years. There's been a Housing First policy. And what happens in practice is that you have a person that doesn't have housing, and when you talk to the different people that are diligently working hard to find housing for people, they'll talk about that someone who is, is potentially camping might wait up to a year to get their Housing First type of housing. And that concerns many people, including myself, because when people stay outside, as you all were talking about, it's a lot harder for them to eventually, a year later, be able to come inside. And so I, I have concerns about how we are implementing Housing First here and the, the long link time. And I, and I do understand that people are trying to gain trust and trying to find places for people, but I, I really think that we're not taking into account the damage in our community, both physically and mentally, to both the people who are homeless and the people who are, who are victimized by people who are drug addicted or mentally ill. And I think we need to look at being respectful, being helpful, everyone deserves a home, and how we can get more people inside more quickly and have fewer people camping, and how we can make sure that those who have drug issues and those who have mental health issues get the help that they need versus spending a lot of time languishing camping. So, I do not know the solution, and I'd love to talk about it, but I have appreciated Council Michaels' thoughts on this issue. I've watched her be very compassionate herself with people that she meets and offering them help and help, offering them assistance, and not afraid of doing the hard work that you all do. And so I just really would like to figure out a way that we can honor that and make sure that we are both being compassionate and being firm so that we are not just kind of putting up with behavior that we shouldn't be putting up with. So...
I'm really sorry. I apologize, Deputy Mayor. I, I had everything planned out, and I was gonna speak, but, you know, after taking a two-hour verbal blast, you know, it's hard.
Yeah, you're, you're...
So, I apologize.
Would you like to show some of the photographs?
Um, no, it's okay.
Or you want to do that next time?
No, it's, I think he's already left and took it down, but it's okay.
All right.
I think we'll be good. I, I'd like to continue to move this to the agenda, and then we can discuss this before August 20th.
Okay.
All right. I mean, I can show you a photograph of someone sleeping in front of an MPD no trespassing sign in a doorway downstairs. It clearly doesn't stop it, and...
That's not what, that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about...
You yourself have called me in the middle of the night saying, Danielle, this person, where can I take them? Where can I take them? I've gotten that call from you at least three times. And when I tell you there's nowhere to take them, what do you do? Because there's nowhere to take them right now.
This would not take an effect until we would have places to take them. So, at any rate, this has been proposed, and it's, we are going to have a workshop on it, and there's a proposal to move it to the agenda.
So can we schedule this workshop?
Butcher has his hand raised for like 10 minutes.
Pardon?
Butcher has his hand.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Council Butcher.
Sure. Okay. The first question I have is, is what does this do? What does this camping ban do to help with health and safety?
He said, what is the camp, what is the camping ban? What did you ask? What does the camping ban do to help with public safety?
What does it do to help with health and safety?
Hopefully, it's gonna get people out of these horrible conditions, Brian.
So, so the idea is, so the idea is we get them out of these conditions?
You guys have spent two hours coming after me, letting me speak.
Boo, fucking boo.
Hey.
Kick me out if you want. This is the coolest, most grotesque thing I have ever witnessed. Ever.
Okay.
That's because it's made for...
Okay.
It's outrageous, right?
This is it. Done.
It's outrageous.
This is our turn to, to talk amongst ourselves, and if you all would like to leave, you're welcome to. But if you're gonna stay here, you need to be quiet. We've heard from you, and we want to hear more from you, but not right now.
So...
Yes.
So, I'm sorry. So, is the idea, then, that we get them out of the street and into jail? Because that's all that's being proposed.
The idea is to get them, the idea is to get them out of camping and into another location, and it does not have to be jail. It can be, it can be a homeless shelter, it can be non-congruent living. It's, it's other locations, not camping, because camping leaves people vulnerable, and that's the concern.
So, the other locations, given even if, even if you have both shelters all the way operational, the other locations you're proposing are outside, just outside of the city. That's the only place that they could exist, right?
Outside of the city. Hazel House, the Pope's in the city.
You're asking them to keep about counting around people's private property. And, and it was also brought up, like, people should be able to set up tents wherever they want. I, I think we all know that under current law, they can't do that. You know, if they're blocking the sidewalk, blocking some kind of public entryway or something like that, they, they can't do that already. So, but yeah, so I, I'm just concerned about the idea that this addresses health and safety, and I'm not hearing really a, an answer to your question.
I think part of the health and safety is trash, that there's mountains and mountains of trash, and part of the health and sa, safety is feces, and part of the health and safety is stealing things and then finding them in encampments.
Okay. So, but I, how does this address those?
By banning the encampment similar to what all of the other, banning encampments similar to what all the other cities in our area have done.
Wheeling has a mandate.
I'm asking a question that needs a specific answer, which is like, how does this address that?
And we all may just disagree on this.
No, no, I just, I, I, I'm just wondering what the answer to that question is. But that, I mean, if we don't have an answer, that's okay. The, the, the thing I had tried to communicate to, to some members of council on it as an alternative, that that actually does address like safety and crime issues instead of this, would be a dedicated task force of police. You know, I, I think we would need to figure out what it is that would be motivating enough for our, our department to join something like this. But the Department of Justice has significant numbers on how hot spotting in policing affects crime statistics and how it's one of the more effective ways that you can achieve, you know, reductions in crime activity. I, I feel like that's what I hear from a lot of people, and what I'm hearing from, you know, Main Street Morgantown, I've heard from landlords here tonight, is that what their concern is, is, is crime activity, right? And, and actually, they're addressing health and safety, right, like, safety concerns, people breaking the law. You know, what I would propose in the place of this is, is that we institute a division of the police department that is dedicated to hot spotting, foot patrols that, I, I think we already kind of know the areas in which that hot spotting could be presented. I know it's frustrating to talk about it right now after this long public session. I tried to engage members of council before this, and they, you know, refused to answer their phones, so that's kind of where we're at now. You know, the, the, it's, it's just that we, we know, you know, the, the things that we're talking about and the kind of solutions that we can come to to address people's concerns, and instead we're, you know, doing something with, with like the guise of, of public safety. And I'm not sure how this, this addresses that. Like, we'll put people into jail, and then they come back out of jail in a worse situation, more desperate, probably more likely to commit, like, you know, worse crimes, when really it sounds like what we're trying to address is like, when people are in specific areas within our downtown, a lot of places in our city, that they, you know, feel intimidated by crime. And, like I said, there, there's proven methods that the DOJ has come out with and done like extensive studies on that we could use to mitigate that. And instead we're like reaching for something that like data would show you does the exact opposite. So I'd like to help all the business owners and everybody that's expressed concern and say, you know, some, whichever one's mine. And, and I think that we have like proven methods to do that. I'm just not sure why we're doing this instead of that unless it's just to, you know, appease, kind of send a political message, really. So, yeah, that's, that's, that's where I'm at with it. I would ask that if we are going to move this to an agenda, I would request a roll call vote on it, because I am against moving this to an agenda, also for the same reasons that Danielle has cited that, you know, I think a lot of us on council, especially people who have been here at previous councils, have worked on things for a long, long time and can't get them on a committee of the whole agenda, and we're kind of just going back to it with this one. So I'd appreciate a roll call vote on, on this if we are to try to move it to it.
So I guess, so there's issues, issues of crime, but also issues of just mountains of trash, and the amount of time that our employees could be spending on something else that the city ambassadors and the, and the public works spend just on picking up just mountains and mountains of trash. I've never seen so much trash anywhere in my life.
And with the camping ban, you're still doing that, you're still cleaning up all that trash, but now you're also paying the incarcerated people. So, it, because, because it's not actually like solving the root cause of all the crashes there, right? So, I, you're just spending more money, so, I mean...
So, if, if, if there are people that have, if there are people that have solutions...
Don't take this down.
If there are people that have solutions to mountains of trash, or, or what you do with places being broken into and...
Increased, increased trash, hot spotting of foot patrols, and we can do a daybreak program in which we, in which all people in the community clean up trash. So there's, there you go.
Trash pisses me off, too, but I guarantee I've spent more time cleaning up trash than any member of our...
Do you have something to say to me?
I'm just frustrated with your attitude right now. I'm sorry if that shows on my face.
This is, this is a complicated issue.
I'm sorry if it shows on my face. You're right, it is.
Well, little snaps and little whatever's going on. I'm sure it's very clever, but it's hard to have a good conversation with a lot of snaps going on. So, I know that you all think that it's clever, but it's really not. Is there anything else you wanted to say, Brian, besides we should have some kind of a meeting?
Yeah, I, no, I, I think...
Oh, and you wanted a roll call if this was gonna go to an agenda?
Yeah.
Do you all want to have a roll call?
Rather do by application.
I would like to determine when you're going to hold a workshop because we can't, we don't even have the time to have two meetings in August, and my schedule is decently full with other meetings, so...
I'm available August 13th evening, when we would usually have our council meetings, if anybody is interested.
I can't.
August.
Can we do Zoom?
We could do a Zoom meeting.
When is this? Yeah, I don't think I can at all, but that's okay. You guys can, you guys can duke it out.
Or we can, or we can send out the, what do they call this?
The Duke of Call.
You know, that was, that is just one solution that I have so that we can look at options. Because it sounds like we have a lot of...
Well, the, we're gonna have a meeting was the 6th. Isn't that when everybody's not here?
Right, we're at Municipal.
So, let's not do that. I mean, we can do that, but...
I'm good for whatever we decide for a meeting.
I'm good for any date.
Or we could, I know we have executive session. We could discuss it further in executive.
I'm glad that everyone's schedules are so open, but I have like city meetings and stuff like every freaking night that week.
I just leave Tuesdays open.
Tuesday is not when we're at the municipal?
What are you talking about, next week? Next week, we're at municipal.
He's talking about the 13th, Jenny.
Yeah.
I've got a National League of Cities meeting that evening. On Wednesday, I think the Woodburn Commission is meeting. On Thursday is the Woodburn Neighborhood Picnic and the Bo Park Concert, like...
Yeah, Thursday, we'll be in DC discussing with our legislators about the airport.
So you're talking about...
August 12th week.
August 12th, Monday or Tuesday? Tuesday?
12th was Tuesday.
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 Or, I'm sorry, 12th is Monday. 13th is Tuesday.
I could do Tuesday if that's...
Could we result scheduling of...
Or do we have Bo Park?
I'm sorry, hold on. What was that, Brian?
I think they're gonna schedule a meeting when no one can attend.
I'm just, I don't believe a meeting is being scheduled. I believe we're sitting here trying to figure a solution.
Probably not available on most days, but I just...
Why don't we talk about it at...
Or we can discuss in executive session.
This happens when you brush and you spread.
Can we move it to the agenda? Do we move it to the agenda?
Um, we want to have a roll call.
Roll call?
We need it, sure.
All right. We're gonna have a roll call moving it to the agenda. Can we do that? Can I, maybe like this? Okay. Do you want to move it to the agenda?
Yes.
No.
Yes? Not at this time?
Yes.
Okay. So, right now, we're moving it to an agenda. It does not have to be the next agenda. We can decide that as we're moving forward, but the idea, I think, was, but we need to figure out a workshop before that.
Yeah. I'd like to keep it on the August 20th, if we can.
If we can. All right. So, it's nice that this is going on August 20th when the thing that I've been asking for for 14 months is on August 20th. So is that a problem?
It's a workshop before it... It's been a problem for 14 months.
All right. I think we should move toward executive session, is if someone wants to read it.
Pursuant to the West Virginia State Code 69A4B12 to discuss matters affected by certain crime privilege and potential pending litigation. I move we go to executive session.
Second.
Maybe you could include the 9 ones.
And 96984B12 to discuss matters related to the development of real estate area of what...
Okay.
10 over.
Will you go and prove that? Yes?
Yes, second.
Second?
Second.